All right, good evening and welcome to the Milton School Committee meeting via remote access on April 29th, 2020. At the top of the meeting, I just want to remind that we are still conducting our open meeting pursuant to the Baker-Palito executive order dated March 12th, 2020. That is suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, so just to put that on record. The next thing that I want to do is approve tonight's agenda. I myself am going to make a motion to make a couple of changes and then I'll ask the committee if there's anything else they want to change. So, under the superintendent's report, I'm going to make number A, presentation by Principal James Jett on the 2020 graduation ceremony at Milton High School. I am going to strike under finding of subcommittee report, Unit B reorganization. And also, under number 13, executive session for tonight, we are striking that and moving it to next week. To the members, does anyone else have any additions or changes they want to make? Okay. All right, so the next thing I want to do is I want to move on to number three, which is citizen speak. I know we have a lot of community members on the phone tonight, some who probably have never maybe attended in person. This is kind of, you know, never done it remote via citizen speak, but as you know, our school committee, our school committee meetings are conducted under the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, which allows for citizen speak at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. I just want to go over citizen speak for tonight. So, citizen speak is usually limited to 15 minutes. I, as a chair, can extend it to 30, which for tonight, I will, 30 minutes. We'll see how citizen speak is progressing, if we have to vote beyond that. It would require a vote by the entire school city, but we'll see, we'll see where we're at by the 30-minute mark. I want to explain the rules, under Robert's Rules of Citizen Speak. The members of the community that are on that would like to speak to an issue, what we do in person is there's a sign-in sheet where you sign your name and your address, and then we will call you each as you sign in to speak. So, what I'm going to ask for you to do today on our virtual meeting is to go under the chat. Most of you might know, are familiar with Google Chat. If not, it's in the upper right-hand part of your screen. You click on the chat and then you can type in your name and your address. I'm going to give people some time to start doing that now. And then, once we start getting some names and addresses, we will call on those people to see if they would like to speak. As you know, we have muted most of the mics, which we're asking when you're not speaking to mute your mic so there won't be any like reverb or feedback, which you sometimes get in virtual meetings. So, when your name is called, you can unmute your mic and then speak. Due to the fact that we anticipate there could be many speakers tonight, the other rule of citizen speak is that each person is limited to three minutes. So, I've asked Dr. Spalding to just keep time so that each person gets a chance to say, have their say and speak to whatever issue they want to speak to. So, I just kind of wanted to go over that publicly again, that's the rules of it. The other thing I wanted to say is that citizen speak, under Robert's Rules, is that you as citizens have a chance at this open meeting with elected officials to speak your concerns. We as elected officials do not respond to citizen speak. We take in the comments and we listen, and that's what it's for. But you can't, we don't, we don't respond, so I hope that everyone understands that. All right, so I'm looking at the chat group now, is anyone here for citizen speak? Does anybody want to speak? Okay. Okay, so can I ask, again, that's like my work meeting. When you're not speaking, can I ask that you mute, you mute, you mute your computer? Because we can't have chit-chat in the background while people are speaking, so it's barely heard. All right, so the first person I see at citizen speak is Rob, Rob Alfer from 234 Lyman Road. So, Rob, are you here?
I am.
All right, Dr. Spalding, you ready to, to time?
I am ready.
Okay, take it away.
Is there a way for me to share my screen? Would that be a problem? Let me explain the concept and then you guys can decide. I know how to share my screen, I just don't know it'll be too disruptive, like spend my entire day on these things now, so. So, as a little bit of background, my daughter Simone is a senior. I'm an architect and was a contractor from close to you, try to Karen Spalding knows me, all two. So, just, I kind of take a, as an architect, sort of taking, I'm going to call it a somewhat scientific view to things when I saw. I'll be honest, when I first saw the proposal from Mr. Jett, I thought, oh, that's kind of cold. And the more I talked to my daughter, I realized the disappointment and frankly anger. I started to think with a couple of other people, I was talking to Brian Burns on this call, like, there's other ways to do this. So, I just took the concept of a football field and just started to figure out, like, how could I lay out a space on a football field to accommodate what we ended up with is 242 people on a football field. Football is a small area, it's all the same size as an area. A larger area would be much easier than this. And what we found is you can get, and what I think, what we're focusing on is students, get the students together, to an extent on the parent, but who cares about the parents? It's about the kids. You can get 242 kids on a field with a stage far off the field. You can have 15-foot space in between each kid with a four-foot aisle outside of a six-foot zone, leading to a 40-foot aisle leading up to a vicinity. Drawings a bit, designed it, there's a way to do this. I'm not saying today, we deal with projects, we're actually doing COVID research projects with biotech companies, so I'm very familiar with all the rules of what has to happen here. I'm dealing with one of the top companies in the state who's possibly solving the testing crisis here, so I'm very familiar with this topic. There's a way to do this, so I'm happy to share that or send that to you folks, but wanted to take that into consideration. You can't do it today. By June, July, August, the world is going to be very bad, so it's worth considering.
Okay, thank you for your time and then your comments. Next person, is there anyone else signed up? That's it, then no one else is ready to speak? Going once, going twice?
What if you can't figure out how to do it online but still want to speak?
Okay, what, you know, I have a couple of, I have a couple of names coming up, so I'm going to go to them and then can you give me your name? And we'll just, I'll write it down and you can go, you go after, your name?
Sure, thank you, it's Bernadette Bentley, thank you.
Okay, next is Carrie, it's Carrie McCarthy, Carrie, you on, on the line? 15 Fairfax, Carrie? Maybe you have to unmute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, I'm just calling in to express my concern with the fact that the parents of the students of the class of 2020 were not asked to participate in any of the decision, decisions regarding senior week, or more importantly, graduation. As the whole entire country rallies around these graduating students, the Milton Public Schools officials decided that canceling activities and offering a drive-through graduation was the best that they could offer. Other districts have postponed graduation, made alternative dates for proms, and some have even planned a breakfast during Thanksgiving break. I'm sure you agree, these communities would not put their communities at risk by planning these events. For some students, senior week is their only celebration, the only time they are celebrated for their achievements. Why is this one and only option for this class? The administration has not put out one other idea, no virtual awards ceremony, no summer gathering, absolutely no closure. I have to ask you if you really think this is all this class deserves. Are they not worth more than receiving their diploma out of their car? Milton can do better, and the class of 2020 certainly deserves better. Thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carrie. Next, we have Brian Burns from 198 Manning, Manning, Bentley?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not a very good typist.
No worries.
And I corrected it below, so I don't have to go twice. And thank you for the chance to speak tonight. I often applaud the administration for their work. I think they're talented, I'm proud of our school system, I'm proud of where I get to send my kids.
I'm sorry, Brian, you're, we can't hear you, I don't know if you hit your mute button?
I don't know how we've all kept our sanity.
Okay, go ahead.
Did I disappear?
Yeah, you, you just, you just went out, so I'll, we'll just back you up a little bit. So, I know you had said, why don't you just start from the very beginning, I'm sorry, because you'd be lost here.
Okay.
There you go. All right, we can hear you again.
All right, I applaud the administration, let me shut off my video, that sometimes helps.
Okay, sure.
I don't know how to do that on this one, though.
There you go.
There we go. So, thank you again for the speak tonight. I am one who usually applauds the administration for the work that they do. This is one instance where I felt, this is one instance where I felt I needed to speak up on behalf of my senior. The President of Jet outlined his email yesterday, sells these kids short. Other school systems are working to provide a better experience, to honor their graduates. This virus has not been fair to any of us, and it's been worse in these susceptible, vulnerable populations, like seniors in high school. And they face the same, the same daunting prospects as they enter college next year, when colleges don't know what they're going to be doing. I think it's incumbent upon us, the parents, the administration, the school committee, and the town to work hard, to be planful, to be imaginative, to find a better way to honor what these kids have done. It should be all about them. The time is not now to make this decision. We've got a month before the actual graduation was supposed to happen, and we don't know what's going to happen in that, in that time. And we have two months following that before these kids start leaving for schools. I'm imploring the school committee to push it back on the administration, to work with students, to come up with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next is Adam Linkler from 222 Robbins Street.
Everybody, you okay? Yep. So, I, I didn't prepare anything, in fact, I just kind of panicked after Rob went and there's nobody else, so I quickly threw my name down, but Perry and Brian said, I just want to, I just want to echo what they said, I'm totally agreeing with they, with what they're proposing, with that, and with Rob. I believe that this decision was done way too hastily. I believe that there is multiple alternatives, like that other schools have done. And, yeah, it's, I don't, I won't get too much time, I just want to say that I echo what everyone else said, and I think we're, better solution, and we could do better. And that the kids should have been consulted on that, which is the student government. And that's kind of where I stand.
Thank you, Adam.
Thanks.
Next, I'm going to go to Bernadette Bentley now, Bernadette, can you just give your address for the record for the minutes?
My address is 43 Howe Street.
Thank you.
Hi, so thank you for this opportunity. My daughter Mayne is a senior and my son graduated two years ago, and his graduation was one of the best days of my life. I'm going to get emotional here because I just think it's so important that our kids have the opportunity to graduate, be with their friends, hear constant circumstances, be with their teachers, be with their guidance counselors. And I know that as of this present moment, that can't happen, but it can happen later in July or August. And if at that time, things haven't changed and we can't do it, at that point, that's the time to start to think about other options. And most of the school districts in this area are postponing, and I think it's something that we need to do. It's something that we need to, we can't be jumping into something so quickly. And I also was reading Mr. Jeff's email, and the term dignified was used several times. And honestly, I cannot think of really a less dignified event than a caravan drive-through. Mailing diplomas might have been, would be worse, but this is, I know that a lot of time and effort went into coming up with that plan, but to me, it is, that is not dignified. And I think that our students, I know that our students should have the opportunity to march through constant circumstances, whether it be out in open field in July, succeed away from each other with just parents there. And I just think this is really important for the district to consider. I've worked with Mr. Jett, I've known Mr. Jett for 10 years, I've known, took it kind of going with 15 years. They always do what's right for the students, and they always welcome parents' input. And the fact that parents and students were not consulted in any way, it's very, very, very surprising to me. It's just out of character for the Milton Public Schools. Other districts are holding surveys, other districts are doing Zoom calls, other districts are creating task force, including parents and students. And that is the approach that I would have expected from Milton Public Schools. And I just, I'm almost speechless with this is the approach that was taken. So, I truly hope that after this meeting, the school committee, who I know many of you, and I know how much you care about the students, will consider including parents' students' input. And also, if, just do not discord with this without taking our policies into consideration. And the final point I want to make is about safety. We, of course, want every person to be safe, the teachers, the administration, students. And if you hold it on June 7th, students are still going to get together afterwards. You know that's going to happen, so if you hold it later on in the year.
That's three minutes.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Bernadette. Next on the line, Kevin, Kevin Swanton, but you need to give, are you there? And you need to give your address, please, for the record. Mr. Swanton, I'm going to, I, they don't give one more try before I move to the next person? All right, I'm going to, I'm going to move to the next person and I'll come back in case you're not properly on yet. Natalia Vega from 26 Maryland Road, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
First off, I would like to thank the administration and the senior parents who stood up for us seniors. I am a senior myself, and hearing this news that was just sent out the other day was very disheartening to me and all my peers. It was just the fact, we looked at it in the sense that we completed 13 years of hard work, and this is what they were going to give us. This is, they're repaying us as a drive-through graduation. I understand the circumstances we're in, but you would think that the school committee would want to do, go above and beyond for us since we've missed half of our year as a senior, and want to give us like an amazing setup and just throw our graduate, or throw our diplomas on the side of the road and send us off. I think the class of 2020 deserves so much more than a drive-through graduation. And I think that we should, we should get told, and the seniors should have a say in our, this is our final setup. This is for our families too, it's not just for the administration to send us off and that. And this is not any closure for, this is not any closure for us, and the administration, it feels like they just want to get rid of us. So, my final words is I really like the administration to look over this and let us have a say in our, what our 2020 graduation closure looks like. And, and all that thinking, all right, hold on.
I'm tired with the moon, sorry. All that being said, I guess my biggest problem, I'm echoing what everyone else said, and I appreciate everyone. The fact is, to push June 7th, so soon, 24 schools in the surrounding area are actually doing. So, looking at that scenario, I don't know why we cannot, you know, at least look into a further date to see if things get any better and to see if we can have a, you know, a better graduation, but thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on, I just want to remind everyone who's not speaking to mute, to mute your computer, just if there's not reverb in the person that is speaking here, you can be heard clearly. Okay, next is Sarah McDonald from 60 Hilltop Street, Sarah, honey, you on?
Can you guys hear me? Hi, as most of you know, I'm also a part of the senior class. I am calling on behalf of my class, as much as I would like to speak for everyone, unfortunately, I can't, I can just speak for myself. And I would appreciate if the school committee, administration, Milton Public Schools itself would rethink the decision to do a drive-through graduation. As Natalia said, we have spent these last 13 years working extremely hard through sweat, years. And we've been together through this, and we've succeeded through so much. It's really disheartening to go through all of this and feel that we're the drive-through graduation, when I, and everybody as well, just.
Okay, we can hear you again, honey, you just, you were getting muffled there, sorry.
I would just really appreciate if everyone could consider thinking this whole spin of a grad, a drive-through graduation and supporting each other. I know us seniors want to be able to walk across the stage and say, look what we did, we did this together. And everything would just be much appreciated if another option could be put on the table for us, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. I'm going to go back to Kevin Swanton, are you on the line at all, or just double checking before we move on? Okay. Okay, I don't see any other names that are typed into the Google chat for citizen speak. I'm just going to do it again, going once or twice. Okay. With that then, I'm going to move on to the superintendent's report, Superintendent Gormley?
To share his presentation, James?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yep, and again, can everyone mute your line while Mr. Jett does the presentation? Thank you.
Give me a second. Are you guys able to see my, see my screen? Are you guys able to see it?
We can't see it, James.
It says you're positioned to everyone, James, but we don't see that PowerPoint slide.
Now, can you?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, give me one second. So, first and foremost, I just wanted to thank everybody for their comment, and I hope that going for this presentation, people are understanding the conversations that we had, and the amount of work and thought that went into this presentation. Without question, I'll go very quickly, we were proposing the two cot graduation ceremony. We were going to do the national anthem, the music selection, and the speeches, it was going to be pre-recorded in advance. And then the national anthem, the music selection, and the speeches would be aired, shared with the entire Milton Public School community on June 7th at 12:30, and then the caravan slash parade style diploma pickup on the 7th, starting at 2 o'clock. It would have been staggered times. It was the diploma distribution, pitches, declaration of graduation, along with live streaming. Hopefully, you are able to see a picture of similar to what the setup would look like, minus the red carpet that would be right in front of the, we love class of 2020 sign, it would go directly across the length of the driveway, that would be where students would stand. Myself, those who are distributing, would be there. I share this view with you because right near that tree, directly across from the stand, where students would receive their diploma, just like any other high school, and many high schools do an outside graduation, the photographer would be there, the professional photographer, photographer with the company that we've had in previous years. And to the left of that tree, near the crosswalk, that's where Milton Access Cable will be set up, and they will be streaming it live in terms of the caravan slash parade style presentation. Now, with that being said, student and family sentiments. I feel it from a few people, and obviously, some people emailed more than once, the frustration, the disappointment, the anger, sense of loss, because seniors feel like they're lost a lot. But on the flip side, some families, and we ran the gamut of emotion, felt a little bit of relief, because some families were saying, I didn't want to have to make that decision as to whether or not I should not attend the graduation because I'm concerned about health. Then it was a level of understanding that families had, and then some families felt a little bit elation that we were even considering to make a proposal to do something. So, I get it, it wasn't a different, it wasn't an easy decision to make. Out of the emails that I got, a lot, concerns, let them walk, students worked hard, they deserved a walk. And nowhere in my communication, anywhere throughout the year, have we diminished or devalued the work that the students have done. I'm very proud of the work that Milton High School students do on a daily basis and have done over the course of the year. As I said previously, these 10 weeks, because think about it, today is the third day of the seventh week. And I want to make it very clear, and I said it previously, no way does this 10-week closure negate the good deeds and the great success that our students accomplished and accumulated over the course of their career. And, and I commend that. And I also want to remind folks, this is not just an arbitrary decision or decision that's just made in haste. This is a national pandemic and a health crisis. People said students should be able to get together, this is the last time that they would get together as a class. I would love for them to get together, I would prefer that they were back together in the hallways of Milton High School on May 4th. That is not my decision, that is the decision of the governor, who in fact just extended the stay-at-home guidelines until May 18th yesterday. I heard that this is not fair, they should be able to share their experience with their friends. I 100% completely agree with that, that's why we work very hard to say we want to be able to streamline, string the graduation ceremony live. So, people in that caravan, in the parade, in Rhode Island, Connecticut, for grandparents. So if people in that caravan, in the parade, in Rhode Island, Connecticut, or grandparents may not feel comfortable coming in and sitting in the crowd to see their grandson or daughter, or, or great niece or, or great nephew graduate. Uh, they could stream live into that as well to see that. Because the administration just does not want to be inconvenienced during the summer. Uh, I, I say this and I, and I'll challenge anybody to look at Milton High School's administration and see the level of commitment that we put in and the time that we put in, and it's not about me. We enjoy it, nice specifically enjoy all of the app, uh, activities that our students engaged in. And try to get out and support them whenever I can. This is not, and just so people know, we work all summer long and we work weekends and in vacations. Can you have students and parents sign an affidavit stating that, uh, students are well and they're healthy and they agreed to terms? There are a lot of people walking around with the, uh, coronavirus that are asymptomatic. They don't know that they have it. That's the whole purpose of encouraging people to stay home. They didn't say stay home because everybody has the coronavirus. They said it so we can minimize and mitigate the, the spread of this, uh, this very deadly, uh, virus. The seniors have worked hard and they deserve a graduation. You're absolutely right. And as opposed to going completely virtual, and as opposed to going remote, that's why we try to put the measures in place to at least have some sort of semblance of, 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 of a, of a graduation. And so, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. Why can't students make the decision? Students are not considering pre-existing health, uh, challenges of their own peers, of their own peers. Students are not privy to the health challenges of other people's, uh, immediate family members. Maybe a parent or guardian, or, or guardian or grandparent has some sort of health issues that would like to participate in it. Students are not privy to the health challenges of our faculty and staff. It will be in a, in close proximity of the students. Individual students are not responsible for the safety and wellbeing of graduate, uh, graduation participants. Students' emotions are guiding their stance and I get that. I can't make a decision on emotions, I gotta make a decision on what is right and safe and secure for families. And then finally, I want to remind people, this is a national health crisis, it's a pandemic. We should not be putting a very serious decision in the hands of the students. And I say that with all due respect to the students on this, uh, on this conference call. I admire you, I, I, I applaud you, I think the world of you, and I think that you're gonna do great things beyond this. But this is an adult decision. Um, the governor, the commission of education, to impol families or students to see if we should close school. Uh, that is a decision that they have to make as leaders to protect people and to make sure people are safe. I want to dispel some rumors. Students work hard for nothing. If people think that they went, and again, up until March thirteenth, that was the day of the school closure, that they worked for nothing. I can't control that. Because you know what? I think going through the rigor of, of the Milton Public Schools and Milton High School and your work ethic and the, the, the amount of time that you spend, not only in the classroom, but in your extracurricular activities. If this situation, if, if you allow this situation to define you, I can't control that, but it's not defining me. I told you guys last week in a communication and in a video, your, your legacy is cemented. Your legacy is cemented, and this is what we need to teach you guys in addition to the content material. How to be resilient, how to persevere, how to bounce back in the face of adversity. I always use this line, show me a hero and I'll show you some adversity. Why, why don't two hundred and thirty-one students, in a minimum of two hundred and thirty-one parents and guardians come out of this being heroes? And understand that this is something that is beyond our control. The administration and faculty do not care. I don't want people to think that this was a decision that was made on Monday afternoon or Tuesday. Uh, this is something that started to be, to be talked about on March twentieth, the week after we were out, when the governor extended it beyond March twenty-seventh. So I think that's very, uh, very important for people to know. It's also important for people to know that this conference this evening is not in response to any negative or, or disagreement with this. This was something that I asked the school committee if I could get on this agenda prior to any negative feedback about this proposal, because this was my job to get this out to you. Students are not being honored. I don't think that is the case. And I know someone mentioned that we're not doing anything about the award show. We're about to put up a, a, a website honoring all of our kids from Century Club, the book awards and things like that. Unfortunately, this is not the mode that we typically run in, so we have to do things, uh, collaboratively over the internet and over the computer. So we ask for people's patience on that, because we have been talking about that and that will be forthcoming. And it'd be a website with messages on it and the highlights, that's gonna last longer than just the evening of the actual ceremony. The administration does not care about how students feel or think. I gotta tell you, and I think that any member on the school committee would tell you, I knew that this was gonna be, uh, uh, met with some resistance. Because you guys are passionate, and I'm referring to the students. You are debt dedicated, you want a showcase, you want to, uh, you want to support your peers. I told folks last week, this social distancing goes against the fabric, the very fabric that makes Milton High School a very place to be. We want you to come together, we want you to be engaged. For some of the students that spoke, they, some of those students came to me about activities that we didn't even have, uh, at the high school. And we work with those students to implement them. People fail to forget, clubs and activities, we had a shortfall. We didn't want, we didn't want to cut anything. We went to a public appeal to try to make sure that those clubs and those extracurricular activities stay in place for our students. And we'll continue to do things like that. Why didn't you survey the students and let them decide? International pandemic and a health crisis, and I know what students are gonna say. And just so folks know, and I won't speak about specific, uh, districts. There are a lot of districts out there that did a survey and you're absolutely right. Ninety percent of the kids want a regular ceremony. Now they're gonna be stuck, because what are they gonna do when they get that, that, that survey information back and they can't provide what students want? So I get that, and that's their, their, their battle, and I'm dealing with this battle myself. We have not considered other options. Uh, that's not the truth, I'm gonna talk about it. So hopefully you can see my things. We talked about driving theaters, the Wellsley, Mendy Northfield, four of them. Northfield's way near, way near the border of, uh, uh, New Hampshire. But the challenge is there, you put people in their cars for two hours, inevitably someone's gonna go, have to go to the restrooms. How are we gonna make sure that the restrooms are equipped and safe for people to go in the restroom? They're sitting in the cars, how am I gonna control kids going from one car to the next? So this is, that was the challenge. He, uh, we had a teacher that emailed me late in the evening at twelve thirty AM with an idea about Holton's Paw and written a live stream. But because it was so open, how do we control the crowd? How do we keep, uh, lids on everything? Gillette Stadium. I think I spoke with Nicole Dragon and several of the seniors yesterday, and I outlined them to the fact that I emailed, uh, Andre Tippett, one of our teachers' father, Casey Colwell, works at the Gillette Stadium. I reached out using that old email to them. But here's the news, news update on that. The New England Patriots are not even letting their own players that they invest millions of dollars get into this stadium right now. They're gonna be doing training camp remote and watching folks and making sure that they do this. One teacher, Mrs. Plunkett, very, very early Saturday morning, several ideas, wanting to close down Blue Hills Parkway. That is a, a state highway, that's not Milton Police, that's Milton, the state police. We have a hard time when we have the Japanese students exchange parking six or seven buses on that street. To close it down, to let two hundred and thirty-one cars minimum, uh, park on each side of the parkway. And then how do you entertain and reach every person in the attendance when it's so dispersed over close to that area? And then later in July and August, here's the, here's the challenge with that. We want not to lose this opportunity. So for some students who are gonna still be in the area, that's great, that works for you. But some kids might have to leave mid-July, late July, early August. Some kids gotta go to the military. The reason why we chose June seventh is because that is the day that everybody planned for. Everybody planned for, and so that's why it was important for us to do this. And I'm getting into the challenges of a later date. Safety of graduation participants. Our senior class members, members of the class from twenty twenty and immediate families with compromised health issues and conditions. That's what we need to think about. There's no guarantee that we can gather in large crowds. Even right now, you have the Rhode Island, the state of Rhode Island. They have just canceled all of their summer activities through August thirty-first. Same thing with Felmin, same thing with Martha's Vineyard, and you're gonna see more and more communities that come forward and do that. Lost opportunities for students, as I just alluded to. Uh, we will need the appropriate screening mechanisms, whether it's thermal screeners, electrostatic sprayers, the clean things, masks, et cetera. Keep in mind, it's not just the students, it's also the faculty and staff, there's still have young ones. Elderly people in their house, they have health issues, they still gotta go home. It's done with the safety of the students and the faculty, staff and families in mind. Second of all, and again, I'm not sure how other schools are doing this. This was a conversation I had with superintendent, uh, Gormley and Assistant Superintendent Glenn Pavlichek. Uh, we got in the business aspect, trying to rent stuff. For those who don't know, we had a very difficult time, we almost didn't get our, uh, graduation diplomas because some of these companies across the country are not essential employees or, or, or businesses, so they shut down. We had to switch companies and go to company, and it was open because they were, they switched from making caps and gowns to making masks for first responders and healthcare professionals. We'll be, uh, uh, we'll be planning for the reopening of the school in, in, in October. We still gotta receive close to forty-five hundred students next year in the Milton Public Schools that no one is really one hundred percent prepared for. I think the governor and the commissioner of education stated that last Tuesday when they made the announcement. And then the summer months.
Uh, Mr. Jack, I'm, I'm sorry to interject, but this is just the rules of open meeting law. Um, people who are on the line, um, some of you might have come in late. The only reason I allowed the chat to be used was for Citizen Speak, because we have to do this virtually. Um, and I, we allowed you to sign up for it. You're not allowed to speak during the presentation or the rest of the meeting until Citizen Speak opens up again at the end of the meeting. So please stop using the chat. It's inappropriate under the open meeting law. I understand a lot of you are not familiar with that. But this is not, you know, this is not Facebook and this is not Instagram. So I ask everyone to refrain from any and all comments in the chat until Citizen Speak is reopened according to the agenda at the end of the meeting. Thank you so much. Please proceed, Mr. Jack.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, this was also an alternative to a complete virtual graduation. And for some of the people that say we didn't care, we felt it was very important. And with fit, safety measures in mind, I had to solicit the number of staff who would attend that ceremony on that day, so we can make sure that they're ten feet apart and we have proper spacing. And we might have to turn some of our faculty and staff away who want to come and send off our students. But they all understood that on Monday with the entire staff meeting when I presented it to them. Because they too want to see, uh, our students be celebrated and honored. Um, and finally, on this situation, the seventh was the original date. Um, so changes, uh, not just to graduation. We have changes in how we do emergency room visits and hospital visits, hotel, restaurants and grocery stores. Non-essential businesses are closed, transportation, the restricted hours, restricted travel. Professional sports, the, the Red Sox just, just came out and said they may not even start their season until early July, mid-July. And if that does happen, if it does happen, they will be playing games without fans in the stands. So, you know, and that's with people with millions of dollars invested in it. Disney World for the second time in their history of being closed, uh, due to the coronavirus. Colleges and universities, speaking with some of the students on Monday and last week, I want to make this clear because people don't think that I was having conversations with students. Some of the kids don't even know if their colleges are going to be on campus or online. And that's another challenge, because this is such a fluid situation. Funerals and weddings, for those who said people don't, we're not considering honoring people. There are people who are being buried without the, your formal or traditional funeral services that need to be done virtually. In weddings, in births of newborns, and, and people have to look at their newborn through, through the glass until that, that baby is cleared. So this is bigger than just Milton High School. And then what are the key components of the graduation? The graduation is on the same day. It's just an outside graduation. A lot of high schools do this. Students get to hear the speeches of their peers. And we have a plan to include more voices under this format. Because we do a, uh, speech contest and one person, that one person, uh, who wins that speech contest gets to do a speech in addition to the class president. But we have already talked about showcasing anyone who did a speech and put that online with this culminating activity of trying to blend all of this together, so we have more of a representative, uh, representation from the class of twenty twenty. Students still get their caps, gowns, stalls and tassels, that's to no cost to them this year. They still get the diploma dis- distribution, they still have the family engagement. The, like I said, folks could come in a car, I don't care, everybody could rent the Suburban, you could rent the U-Haul. It fit as many people as you want in there. The bottom line is we were doing it with the safety of students in mind and having one person that's, that senior get out. Keep in mind, parents don't, in a traditional graduation, we don't allow parents up in the front to take the pictures of the kids. We don't allow parents to walk across the stage with the kids. The students are still walking, not across the stage, they're still getting their diploma handed to them, and they're still getting their picture of the senior graduation, we're still doing the ceremony. The format is just changing slightly. This event will be streamed live, as I mentioned, to any and all spectators, those in the caravan sitting in their cars, they're in a caravan, and those in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York, wherever they might be. Uh, I work with Milton Access Cable and they assured me that. We're also gonna take drone footage of that to piece together a nice culminating, uh, video that we will share with every senior to make sure that they have it. The procession or recession is still on, they're, they're still on, uh, intact for that ceremony. Yes, in the vehicles, but definitely in, uh, definitely with safety in mind. Other ways to honor students. We talked about the, uh, photo, senior photo banners. I was communicating with a couple of family members and trying to communicate with boosters. We were on banners.com, calling a couple of companies. We wanted to highlight and put students, uh, their banners in their class of twenty twenty along both sides of Canton Ave from the lights made a police station up to Canton Ave. So anybody that drives up or down Canton Ave will be able to see and, and honor our seniors. We talked about, I think the kids came up, some kids came up with a great idea, senior family cookout gathering in the fall. And I put in it, it permitted by experts, because I don't know what's gonna happen in the fall. Honoring seniors during the annual Thanksgiving Day football. This didn't go out in that communication, because I had not spoken to the principal of Braintree High or their athletic director. I don't have their cell phones, but I definitely wanted to reach out, because I would love to see for those students, the seniors, members of the senior class to come back during Thanksgiving. One side of the fifty yard line is Milton High School seniors, the other side will be Braintree. Braintree is gonna be going to a very similar situation that we're going through. Then it was a time capsule. This was the, the, uh, birth of a, a parent's idea and, and purchased by a parent. Uh, and this was something that was gonna be done, and this was talked about before the coronavirus came out, to do something special, uh, for our seniors. Uh, so what is needed at this time? I've always communicated flexibility, creativity, understanding, adaptability, resiliency and perseverance. Uh, because I think that's definitely intended. And I think I skipped the slide, but I talked about important dates. And one of those days were May first. That was when, May first was when, uh, seniors were supposed to make their decision at what post-secondary opportunities they were gonna pursue. May fourth was gonna be the date that we return. May twenty-second was gonna be the date that, uh, our seniors finished their final classes before any exams and end of the sea, uh, end of the year activities and closeout. June second was gonna be the senior awards night. June third was gonna be the boosters banquet. June fifth was gonna be the senior breakfast, I mean, uh, June fourth was gonna be the prom. June fifth was gonna be the senior breakfast. June seventh is graduation. Now because schools closed, I can't control that, but the fact that we could do June seventh to, with some semblance of a graduation, that's what we wanted to hold on to, to bring some closure to this academic year. Not because we don't want to work in the summer, but because we wanted to honor that day. People were so upset about things that they lost and what they wanted to do. And then finally, I know a couple of people wrote emails and a couple of people even said it here, said that we didn't, uh, communicate with anybody. Again, I can't allow students to make an adult decision in the middle of a pandemic and a health crisis with safety on the line. Not only the safety of our students, the safety of our faculty and staff, the administration, and also the spectators at a graduation. And although I list these, uh, different entities on this, uh, slide, I want to make it clear. My job was to communicate to them these ideas. it clear, my job was to communicate to them these ideas, uh, we spoke with folks, these people just thought it was a good idea and they said that they were definitely entertained it. They're not responsible for the, uh, the, the decision, the format, um, the format of a high school graduate, uh, graduation is the sole responsibility of the high school administration and the faculty and staff. But I do appreciate this because taking phone calls, whether it be late in the evening, on a Saturday morning, or on a holiday, in, every one of these individuals stepped up with either feedback or blessing of support because they knew that we had good intentions in mind and those good intentions were to try to properly honor our seniors in what is arguably a very difficult and volatile time. And then I will close with this, just today alone, two hundred and fifty pl- plus people lost their lives to coronavirus. Over three, thirty-five hundred more cases, it brings us over, over sixty thousand cases. We are third in the nation, only behind New York and New Jersey with the number of cases in the Commonwealth and Massachusetts. So, again, I wanna remind folks that we weren't just, uh, isolated and focused on one simple, uh, one simple graduation, and I encourage people, maybe tomorrow, some of these drive-in theaters will open up, but there's a liability on their part as well, because they gotta make sure that they have it. So, that's, that's my presentation and if the school committee allows, I would answer any questions from people. Thank you very much.
Um, I, let me look here. If there's any other comments. Um, okay, I think the first person has a question is Natalia, so, um, we'll do, um, I'm looking at time now, we'll maybe do like a, um, a five to ten minute question to answer, um, on Mr. Jet's request, um, uh, Dr. Spalding, could you time that, please? Um, so, um, I'll go over it, so Natalia, you can have the first question to Mr. Jet.
Hi, Mr. Jet, how are you? Um, the question I have is the schools that are in our area, like, I have at least twenty-four surrounding schools, Hambro, King, et cetera, all these schools are doing end of July, beginning of August, I guess in the hope that things are gonna get better. Um, why can't, I mean, that would give us, I know you wanna follow like a format, but that would at least give us a little more hope that we can maybe possibly do more and, you know, a lot of them have planned like real activities to leading up to the graduation. Um, so that was my, I guess my biggest thing why we had to stick to, uh, the seventh versus, you know, being a little more flexible, because this is not a normal situation, and I know we like to stick to the guidelines and stick to the dates and stuff, but because of the whole s- everything we've gone through, why couldn't we be open to those dates?
And especially because I, I unders- I understand that your concerns of the military, but why can't we follow through if other schools have those same issues? And I don't, just don't understand why we can't follow through with them if they have the same issues as well.
So, I, I think what you're doing, i- 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 so first of all, I appreciate your question and I think Natalia, Mrs. Vega, I think I've been responding to you guys' emails for quite a while now, over the course of a couple of weeks, and I often would find it, last week there was, there were coffee, so, make it seem like I'm not communicating with families, I just need to say that. So what's being highlighted is the number of schools that are postponing it, but they're not giving you any guarantees that they're gonna be able to do something. So for, I saw, because someone took the liberty of sharing with me some of the comments on Facebook about proms being posted on June twenty-fifth, I will almost state they're guaranteed that they will not allow proms on the twenty-fifth of June. I think that's very optimistic. So here's what can happen, I can set a date for June twenty-fifth, then have to cancel it, send another date for Ju- for July tenth, then have to cancel it, instead of, and then it's constant rejection. Here's the scenario, we make a, a decision based on safety, and I get it, and then finally, I'm not gonna put any principals on, on, under the bus, but just so you guys know, every Friday morning, I'm on a conference call with about maybe anywhere from twenty-five to fifty principals in this area, and they're all talking about the same challenges and some of them are talking about virtual or doing something remote, period. And so, and I'm not gonna speak about specifics, but I can't control what somebody does in a different district, uh, we just have to worry about what's going on and happening here in the town of Milton. So thank you very much for your question.
All right, is there anyone else who has a question, you can put it in the chat and, um, I'll call on you to, um, speak to Mr. Jet. Okay, I'm gonna move to, um, oh, Carrie, is that Carrie Curly, Carrie, do you have the question, huh? I just saw your name come up, go ahead. You might be on mute, you might have to unmute. Carrie, you there? I'm gonna just try one more time. Okay, um, maybe that was just an error that you put your name into speak, I'm not sure. Um, okay, I'm, I'm gonna move to, um, to, uh, reach out to the school committee members, um, the, uh, after Mr. Jet's presentation, um.
I'd like to speak, this is Betty.
Um, okay, Kevin asked first, Betty, I'm sorry, a little chat, so I'll go to Dr. Donahue first and then, then Member White.
Y- you go to Betty first, this is.
Okay, all right, Member White, hey, sorry.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, James, for your presentation, and I've been dealing with this issue for the last couple of days, just thinking about it constantly, you know, I think that so much has changed because of this virus and I feel for the graduates, I feel for their parents at the Milton High School, uh, having a son graduate from Milton High School, it was one of the nicest ceremonies and, and I've been to many of the graduations as an aunt and also as a school committee member, and they are fabulous events that are just beautiful. But so many of kids came home from college this year and didn't get to stay on their campus and graduate as seniors through college, um, so many weddings have been canceled this summer and even into the fall. I've had friends who have passed away and no one's able to go to a funeral to honor their lives and be with people and to support each other right now. I have a lot of friends who are grandparents and they can't go in, be with their grandchildren or hug their grandchildren, I mean, this virus has robbed us of our things that we love and things that make life worth living. But I do think that because so much is unknown about this virus, um, how contagious it is, how it's spread, how so many people don't have symptoms who have the virus and unbeknown, unbeknownst are spreading it, I just think it's very risky to, um, have an outdoor graduation and no one can look in the crystal ball and say, are things gonna be better in July and August? I mean, there's no certainty about it and that's one of the frustrations about this is because it's such an unknown. So I do support, um, Mr. Jet's idea, even though I know it disappoints a lot of the graduates. I'm done.
Okay, Dr. Donahue.
Uh, thank you, Chair Verella, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, Principal Jet, uh, someday we're gonna have to have you come by and talk about something that's not controversial. These are deeply atypical times and bluntly, they, uh, remind me of the stories that my grandfather told me about his graduating class, Milton High School, class of nineteen thirty-nine, and his friends' classes and subsequent classes, empty chairs, absent friends, false smiles, and worried film, family members. Let us remember that right now, right now, in Boston, New York City, Philadelphia, Washington DC, there are medical professionals, care providers who are making literal life and death decisions about who receives lifesaving care and who does not. Who's grandparents, parents, brothers, husbands, wives, children, live, and who don't? The men and women of the class of twenty twenty and their families must, must understand that this decision is not about them. This is about the vulnerable in our community. Frankly, and as personally disappointing as this may be, I demand and I expect that these men and women, these citizens of Milton, like all of us, live the words of Jack Kennedy. And to paraphrase, they ask what they should do for their community and not what their community should do for them. Young men and women of Milton, I speak to you directly, class of twenty twenty, your measure will be taken now, in these times, in these terribly trying times, do not be found lacking. Thank you, Chair Verella.
Thank you, Dr. Donahue. Moving on to, um, uh, Member Epphard, would you, uh, make a comment or speak?
Um, sure, hi, everyone. Um, thank you, Mr. Jet, for your presentation and, um, Sheila for running the meeting and to Kevin and to Betty for their comments, I, I look out and see so many faces that I know from the community, uh, and there's just nothing I can say to, to make this better. The disappointment, the loss, it, it's so overwhelming and profound on a community level, on a country level. It's, there just aren't any words, and I wish you could ask, Sheila, you could ask anyone who knows me, I wish that there was something I could say to make it better, but I can't. You know, I, I know some of you sitting out there are people working in hospitals right now, taking care of sick people, you know, four of my own family members doing the very same, and, you know, every day that I don't hear something bad is a day I count as a lucky day. Um, I wish there was something I could do to say to make it better, I can't. It is disappointing and like Dr. Donahue said, it's asking a lot of you, that doesn't seem fair. And, um, I think that Mr. Jet is making a concerted effort to honor you, I heard some people say it wasn't dignified and it probably feels a lot like that, but there's a lot about this situation that's not dignified, um, not being able to say goodbye to people you love, not being able to honor them, so, I, I just want you all to know that as a community member, we all love you very, very much and we're very sorry and wish we could do more. But I think we're trying to do something and if there's something in the future more we can do, you know for sure that we will. But, you know, I wish there was more we could say, except that we are proud of you and we know you will do great things because you've lived through something that no one else ever has in this generation.
Thank you, Margaret. Um, Ned Rosneren?
Thank you, thank you, Chair Verella, thank you, Mr. Jip, um, and your team for all you've done to put this plan together, um, and I share the sentiment, my fellow committee members, um, and the pain that everyone on this call has shared, um, this is a very bad and challenging moment in our history together. And I also wish I could make it all better, but we can't, no one can, and scientists and the medical community are trying their best and hopefully someday soon we'll have, um, vaccines and treatments that we can, um, all take part in and, and get our lives back to, um, the, the things that we're all used to being able to do and being together as a community with our families and friends. Um, and to the class of twenty twenty, you all in particular are feeling it the most right now in our Milton Public Schools community and, and we're so sorry that you have to go through this, it's, it's very sad. Um, however we want, our hope is that the entire class of twenty twenty and all of Milton High School's staff stays well. And someday that you may be able to look back at this thoughtful response to a pandemic with understanding and appreciation and be proud of yourselves and of our community for coming together and, and trying our best to do the right thing by you and by each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ada. Um, Dr. Craig, uh?
I, I'm not sure there's a whole lot more to say.
Okay, just wanted to check in.
No, 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 well, I'm gonna say a couple of things, but.
Okay, sure, sorry.
Just wanna say that I, I echo the sentiments of everyone who's spoken, um, on the school committee so far, and I, I just emphasize also that the, the difficult situation that, um, Principal Jet, uh, is dealing, I think, uh, he has dealt with in a way that whereas it won't satisfy everyone, um, it allows for a kind of virtual space many other districts are going for, but it also allows for an in-person gathering, I mean, students will be able to wave at each other and see each other outside of the cars, I know that's not ideal, but it's something, and it's something that can be done while one is still here and when, um, when it was planned to be. For those who argued that it should, was moved later in the summer, first of all, I know you saw the list of, of diff- on departments that James went to to try to get feedback on and work together with them, it is a heavy lift to do graduation, even when it's planned, even when it's the same kind of situation every year, even when it's the same photographer, where you have that date planned, you have to move a lot of things to get them in place. If we made a date in late July or early August, James pointed out earlier, we'd probably, in all likelihood, have to move it, and to move things means a lot more than just moving a date. So I think that's something to keep in mind, I heard today that the governor of Rhode Island just announced that there would be no in-person events of fifty or more people throughout the summer in Rhode Island, and they aren't even as hard hit, uh, yet as we are, uh, in Massachusetts. Falmouth has canceled all special events through August thirty-first, so the summer, the Falmouth is wiped out in terms of special events. Martha's Vineyard canceled fireworks, the agricultural fair, an illumination night that was scheduled for the third week in August. So you have various, um, entities that are, that are now trying to keep those gas down even throughout the summer, we don't know what it's gonna look like in the fall, and I think this, um, plan, while maybe not ideal, um, is actually, uh, one that takes into consideration, um, what is of paramount importance, and that is the health and safety of all involved. Um, so I thank you, James, for doing the work that you've done and for, um, making the difficult, difficult decision, um, and showing great leadership in doing so, thank you. Sheila, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm muted because I didn't hear you were getting feedback, so, um, I just also wanna close, um, to. to thank, in thanking Mr. Jet for this presentation and to thank, uh, my committee members for their, their comments and their input. As a high school parent with a junior in the system who may face, may also face a lot of the same challenges that these seniors are facing. And having a daughter who got to experience the traditional senior milestones that this class, you know, has been robbed of due to this COVID-19 disease. I understand along with my colleagues in the committee, how disappointing this is for all Milton School parents, guardians, and of course, the students. But I want you to know that we see how much the administrators, the principals, the teachers, all the support staff have gone above and beyond the call of duty during one of the most challenging and uncertain times in the history of our town, of our state, of our nation, and of our world, as you've all seen. There's not a day that goes by that I don't think, and I know my colleagues on the committee don't think, as I said tonight, about the children in the district that we serve and educate and what they are all missing out on, especially all of our seniors, all of our seniors. But I remind myself that what is happening here in Milton is have all those miss, all those feelings of missing out and the unfairness of it. It is happening all over the state, all over the country and all over the world. And what has guided us as a committee during these uncertain times is the exceptional leadership of the Milton Public Schools. With all that's happened, everyone in the Milton Public Schools is doing what they can to ensure that our students are safe and healthy. We would never want to put, as Mr. Jet and others have said tonight, anyone in jeopardy, given the clear public health policies that are guiding all the decisions made by the Milton Public Schools. In any attempt to thoughtfully plan for some sliver of joy which this event would be and ho-, um, a joy and hope, um, and, uh, it needs to still be based on those guidelines. It's a very tough balance trying to maintain tradition with protecting the lives of, and the health of people, especially our students and our school families. And I think it's been said here tonight, but nobody has a plan. There is no obvious what to do in the case of a global pandemic when it comes to graduation. So to all the seniors on the call and their families, I again want to say that you should be extremely proud of this life milestone. I ask, I know how hard it is. We understand your pain, but that you give this district some grace to during these uncertain times and to know that Principal Jet has explored all these avenues to, to create a celebration that he felt would be worthy and safe for the class of 2020. And even though we can't have a traditional ceremony, the pandemic cannot take away the hard work, the great milestones, the cherished memories that this class of 2020 has achieved in their 13-year journey. We all again want to thank Mr. Jet for coming and presenting. And for the parents who have dialed in tonight to tonight's meeting to share their thoughts and concerns via Citizen Speak and email. I hope tonight's presentation has given some insight and a better understanding of why Mr. Jet has decided on this plan of action. I wanted to let everyone know as well that, uh, legally, the school committee, um, does not control the graduation ceremony. We don't have the power to approve it, but disapprove it. It lies with Principal Jet and the administration. It's not a legal action that the school committee controls. You know, however, um, you know, tonight we've all spoken and I think that I formally uh, would like to recommend that the committee, um, have a vote of support of Mr. Jet's decision. Again, we understand the concerns and, um, but, uh, we would like to take a vote on that. Yeah. Mr. Jet?
Yeah, before you do that, eh, because I think if you vote and you make a statement, we're gonna close. Uh, if I could just have one final word, I want to thank those people who, uh, for their op, who came forward, even if it was in opposition of the plan, because it just shows their passion and their commitment to the community of, uh, the Milton High School community. And so I thank them for that. I also want to extend a heartfelt thanks to the silent majority and a number of parents who emailed in support of the, the plan. Because I also have to make a plan that's inclusive. And so I'm speaking for those who are in the senior class and their parents and guardians who may be asthmatic, diabetic, hypertension, heart disease, lung illness, or anything like that. It may be severely impacted by the coronavirus. So as much as people ask me to reconsider, I will ask folks to really think about what was conveyed this evening and ask them to reconsider. Doesn't mean that they're gonna be 100% happy, but I hope that we could still come together and have some sort of celebration that people could feel, uh, comfortable. And so, uh, I just wanted to make those statements. So I, I applaud everybody for their, their, uh, for tuning in and for the emails that they sent me and I will get around to responding to those emails. It's just gonna take a little time. Thank you.
Okay. And I also want to tell, I also, thank you, James. I also want to tell people that there is a Citizen Speak. Um, we start, as I explained at the beginning of the meeting, at the beginning of the meeting and there's a Citizen Speak, um, at the end of the meeting. So if some people came on later and still want to have a chance at Citizen Speak, um, that does happen, um, uh, at the end of the meeting, but we do have a couple, a couple of the agenda items that are here and that we have to, um, get to. Um, before we do that, um, I would like to make the motion, um, to have a vote of support on the plan, um, as it is now. Um, to the members on the call, again, under the virtual meeting, we have to do a roll call vote. So, um, I, I'd like to make that motion if, um, the committee can unmute themselves and wonder if I can get a second. Okay, uh, roll call vote. Uh, Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Eberhart?
Yes.
Dr. Donnie?
Yes.
Uh, and Member Verella? Yes. Um, people will still have a chance to speak, um, at the, uh, the end of, oh, I'm sorry. Ada, did I forget you? I'm sorry, Ada. Member Rosemary, your, your face didn't pop up. Member Rosemary?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, people still have a chance to express their concerns, um, at the end of the meeting. And, and I also have to say, you know, um, you know, I know even with Mr. Jet, um, you know, this, we're planning this, um, you know, for June 7th. Um, you know, I, I, everything that's outlined, um, I know there can maybe be some small tweaks to things, um, that, you know, that could safely be added. I'm sure he might be, you know, open to that, but this is, this is the framework of how it should be executed. And, um, you know, I'm sure, eh, again, we all support that, but, um, and I also want to thank everyone who spoke at the beginning and, um, if people want to speak at the end, um, for your time tonight, uh, for being on the call. So I'm gonna move on, um, to back to the superintendent and we have the middle school site council to present to us tonight.
We'd like to invite, uh, Principal Bill Fish and the members of the site council to come forward. Uh, Principal Fish, do you want to, um, uh, take the mic now?
Sure. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Thank you. And we'll leave you to make the introductions and
All right. Well, first of all, thank you, um, for the opportunity to present to the committee. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can, uh, provide a little bit of balance at tonight's meeting. So, and, um, thank you to the, to the Pierce Site Council for being here tonight and for being patient as we waited for our, for our term on the, turn of the agenda. I'm gonna go ahead and share, uh, my screen right now. All right. Can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
All right. Um, so first of all, again, thank you for the opportunities to present, um, tonight. We're hopeful that we can provide the committee with an update on some of the work and the efforts that have been going on at Pierce since the fall. Before we get to that, I would like to again, to thank our site council members for attending tonight and for their patience as we waited to make our presentation. Uh, and if we could just go through in order of the slides, just introduce ourselves and let the committee know who we are, what roles that we hold at Pierce. So, um, Mr. Clary, can you get it started?
I sure can. Uh, nice to be able to talk to everyone. You can hear me out there. Just, uh, representing Pierce for the site council and we were, we were moving with a lot of progress. Uh, Principal Fish had a very difficult, you know, transitional year. I mean, it's been crazy and he, he, he's done just a tremendous job, uh, kind of pulling in the committee itself and establishing goals and kind of changing on the fly constantly and, uh, I think those monthly meetings really helped kind of, um, get us to where we are today. So it's nice talking to you all and, uh, back to school eventually.
Hi, I'm Carrie Devon. I teach sixth grade, um, social studies.
Hi, I'm Kristen Pray. I teach eighth grade science.
Hi, I'm, I teach eighth grade math.
Dan, if you can go ahead and introduce yourself. Regine was unable to attend tonight and sends her a request.
Sure, I'm Dana Jessup Turner. I'm a parent of a current seventh grader at Pierce and, um, a parent of twins who are rising sixth graders. Very pleased to be part of the committee.
Uh, Ms. Fixon, are you there? Hi, Beverly, can you go next?
Hi, my name is Beverly Ross Benny. I'm a parent of a sixth grader and eighth grader at Pierce and a kindergartner at the Tucker School.
Hi, this is Jackie Slavik. I am, uh, the parent of a sixth grader at this school.
Ms. Wayne? All right. I'm gonna go ahead, um, share with you to give a little bit. One of the things we always talk about with, uh, middle school parents is they don't have a chance to see their students in action. So, um, here's a nice little cross-section of our Pierce student community. So in meeting our students, who are we? We are nearly 1,000 energetic, enthusiastic, diverse students who are amid a booming time of physical, cognitive, and social emotional development. As a school community, we realize that a few things. One, that this is an interesting and sometimes tricky developmental time for our students. And we strive to prosper in our environment, understand the values to empathize with what students are experiencing. We also have come to realize that students, uh, at this point in their developmental lives, their reasoning and critical thinking capacities are developing. And those schools presented a unique opportunity to develop their confidence as learners, thinkers. And we also recognize middle school is the time to develop self-awareness and awareness of others. Uh, and as we, students are learning to navigate the social and interpersonal dynamics and learning toward building, in relationship to develop emotional resilience. So our work as a site council has really been focused on school improvement efforts that attend to the contemporary needs of middle school.
Lynn, is that somebody calling into the meeting? What is that?
I think it's on Mr. Fish's computer.
I don't, is it, can you guys see my screen again?
Yeah, we can see it. No, okay, no. Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, my screen. Can you see the screen? You can see the screen?
No, just you.
Let me try that again.
No worries. This is like everyone's daily work, right? Like how many of us are dealing with this? It's a perfect, like, no worries.
Yeah, I'm, I'm literally sitting in my basement, this little boiler, so.
Yeah, I know. I, I can, I can tell that. I'm like, are you in the basement of a hospital? Like, where the heck are you? Yeah, yeah.
We've been banished to the basement.
Although while he's doing that, I'm sorry, I think I see Vander Brothers in the back of your background. That's a cool backdrop. I love that mini-series just while they're waiting.
You can see that, yes, yeah.
My favorite mini-series of all time, Vander Brothers.
Thank you.
All right. Are we, are we back up in business?
We're back. Yeah, thank you.
I have to tell you, um, of all the presentations I've ever done in Maxford, this is usually the most awkward one because I can't see any of you and or know what was going, I don't even know who's here or how you're reacting to it. So I'm staring at my, my, um, computer in my office, so, um, I apologize for that. So in thinking about as we, as, in, in thinking about our school improvement efforts and goals as we move forward, uh, it's important to think about the profile of, of the school. Uh, and it's hard to do that anywhere in the middle school above the schools without thinking about enrollment. So if you look at our enrollment this year, we are at 979 students, we're approaching 1,000. And if you look at the trend across the grade levels, you'll see as we move from eighth, eighth to seventh, to sixth, there's an uptick every year. Next school year, we're gonna be over 1,000 students. In two school years from now, we're gonna be approaching 1,100. And the year after that, we're gonna be well over 1,100. So, um, it's important that as we think about our work as a site council and as we talk about and think about being striving to meet those contemporary needs of our students, um, it's, it's impossible to forget the role of enrollments and the pressures that that continue to put on us as a school and as a district. To put that into perspective, um, when you look at the parents, Pierce's enrollment to the high schools enrollment, and you can see this for yourselves, but, um, the, the middle school is closely approaching the high schools enrollment. And the reason that's important to show here is that, um, as a middle school, we're at three, obviously three grade, grade levels, but the high schools at four. So, eh, eh, again, something as, as work from the site council and, and thinking closely and critically about, uh, advocating for the needs of our school and anticipating the longer term needs, um, can give a consideration to our enrollments and thinking about staffing and resources, something that this council will spend, has spent a good amount of time on this year, and will need to continue to do so as we move forward, uh, in, in the next few years, which is obviously a trend across the entire district. Um, yeah, as is customary, before we get into talking about some of our school improvement goals for this year, just to highlight some of our NCAS data from the 2019 administration. So I've broken it down into, uh, two slides. One, where our successes a little bit and another where we can talk about our opportunities. So as we talk about our successes, we, we did see some, um, improvements that we should all be proud of in our, um, NCAS performance from 2018 to 2019. We saw the percentage of grade 16 in the year, G and Y competition from LA moved from 66% in 2018 to 77% this past year. We saw a same trend, but even a bigger jump in grade 70 LA from 48% in 2018 to 67% in 2019. And the percentage of grade A students meeting or exceeding expectations in math has steadily increased over the past three years from 60% two years ago, three years ago rather, to 64% two years ago, to 67% last year. Uh, and in science, we've seen the percentage of grade A students exceeding expectations, uh, reached a recent high last in the 2019 administration, um, at 13% versus, uh, compared to previous year, 5% the year before that. It's important to recognize and to celebrate the accomplishments of our students and our teachers. But as, uh, you know, keeping with our core values, continuous improvement, it's important to also look at the opportunities to continue to move, um, our school and our students forward. So grounded in, um, like I said, that value of continuous improvement, I think it's, it's gonna be important over the next few years as a school and as a district, to continue to zero in on the patterns and trend. For example, on average, across the free tested subjects, we see about two-thirds of our students who are meeting or exceeding expectations, uh, which is on par with what we see across the state. In some cases, a little bit higher. Uh, but it's gonna be important for us as a school community to ask questions like, how do we continue to grow? Um, how do we continue to get better? And I think it's even, eh, more, more important question is, what about the one-third of students who are not meeting those expectations? Particularly when, when we see a lot of those students coming out of our high need subgroups. So for as much as we have to, um, to celebrate and to take a long reflection on the achievements that we've, uh, enjoyed from for as much as we have to celebrate and to take a long respect on the achievements that we've enjoyed from 2018 to 2019, it's important that in order to continue to move Pierce Middle School forward, that we think critically about continuing to push the envelope. Some of the strategies that we'll address, and a big one that has garnered a great deal of attention this year is the English Language Arts Curriculum Review Adoption Implementation. And Kat Roche will join us in a little bit to talk a little bit about that process. But we had been identified previously as a significant opportunity for improvement at Pierce. And we're proud to share with you the work that has been ongoing, has continued to happen even in the face of the closure. We've also seen some adjustments in our math curriculum. All free grades now have transitioned to illustrated mathematics, which presents more opportunities for critical thinking, reasoning, and hands-on exploratory math learning. So transitioning away from those MCAS highlights both strengths and opportunities. I bring you to the place where the site council has spent a lion's share of its time and energy this year. So when we began meeting back in the fall, we as a council sort of took it upon ourselves to look at some of the work that was sort of in progress over the course of the past few years. We gave consideration to interests and priorities of some of the voices that were shared through the site council. And then we also think about some of the practical needs of our school. And we began early in the fall to zero in on four focus areas. The first being one-to-one computing, the second one being a review of the current master schedule, the third really coming out of some of the observations that I made as a new person at Pierce and been talking with site council members and families with looking at how we support students' transitions from grade five to grade six, and also that ELA curriculum review, which I had mentioned earlier. So if you look at, you think about that one-to-one, it is hard to imagine us negotiating the closure of school if we hadn't been able to hand up those Chromebooks four days before school closed. But even before we got to that fortuitous point in time, the committee is aware and figure staff is aware and the site council parents are aware that technology is a real deficit at Pierce. So in our elementary schools, we had, for the most part, Chromebooks in every classroom. At the high school for several years has been free-year-on-device. And then at Pierce, there were 12 Chromebook carts or about 300 devices for nearly 1,000 students. So this really got, it was prohibitive for teachers and for students' learning because our teachers did not have a reliable source of technology to draw on. If you could, either, you know, Mr. Clary, Ms. Puglia, Ms. Devon, or Ms. Prain, if you can just talk a little bit about your experiences as a classroom teacher in having to really fight for, negotiate getting your hands on Chromebooks before this came to be.
I would love to chime in on that. This is Kristen Prain, eighth grade science. Again, it was really frustrating, especially, I guess I shouldn't say especially as science, I'm just like, I'm thinking about myself, of course. But it's just one of those things where you want to demonstrate a concept and you don't have the materials to do it in person. And sure, you can show a video to the whole class, but if the kids could get in there and use some of the fantastic technology that's available that you know is free and you know you have access to. And then you plan this great lesson and you just couldn't get a Chromebook cart. And it was frustrating too to feel that animosity towards other teachers in the school who might have thought ahead of you or were able to plan better or reserved a Chromebook cart and then turns out they only needed it for 15 minutes of that whole, you know, of their class period. And it was, it's just a bummer of a way to sort of deal with technology because you were frustrated with yourself, you were frustrated with your colleagues, you were frustrated with the situation. And getting to switch to the one-to-one, even if it was only for four days, was like Disneyland of computer access. It was so exciting and so wonderful. So I'm really thankful that we got there.
And I'd like to add, if I could, is that along the way, people didn't lose faith in the process. We had a lot of teachers who volunteered to be on the one-on-one committee. They went to other schools. And so many teachers set their learning goals as preparing for one-on-one. And as a result of that, I think they were ready for what came down, what happened.
All right, thank you both. I know that the document, the benefits of one-to-one are well documented. It proves student achievement through personalized learning experiences, focusing on student-centered learning, instructional practices are all documented there. But instead of us talking about that, with many thanks to Kristen Prain and Sarah Puglia and Janice Mazzola, a quick video that we'd like to share with the committee to demonstrate what our students have been up to and how they've been able to implement the use of their Chromebooks during the closure of school. Because they have the same side rights, angle measures, same shape. And then near, that's what it is. So I think the last caption on the last slide really sums up. I said that they may not be in school, but they're still still doing quite a bit. And the fact that the timing could not have been any more fortunate in terms of how things turned with the school closure. And it's remarkable, to be totally honest with you. I think we know, as our students, as our own children, our digital natives, I cannot be more proud of or applaud more the efforts from our staff to really make some adjustments on the fly to change the way, to think differently about how they initiate in a totally different environment to leverage the technology. So I just, I also want to publicly acknowledge and thank Superintendent Gormley and the committee for helping us to make sure that we were able to get these resources into the hands of our students and to our teachers the way that we did this year. So thank you for that. Just a few notes, and this is helpful mostly because we'll be thinking about framing school improvement plans going forward. We were able to, through the expertise and hard work of Asia and Lance and others, to organize some PD for our teachers during a few recent early release days. They focused on things like Google Docs Drive, Google Classroom, as well as Otis. And we were able to have, one of the best parts of this is beyond equipping the teachers with the knowledge and competencies that they need to move to a one-to-one environment, is we were able to really leverage the expertise of our teachers who served as facilitators of sessions for their colleagues. And I think that's going to be a really important key ingredient to how we move forward when we begin to get back to whatever normal will look like hopefully in the fall to ensure an onboarding of one-to-one initiative with fidelity. And a lot of that is really drawn from having open conversations with our staff about what their needs are and then being responsive to that. Unless you're just a question for Superintendent Gormley of committee, do you want me to work through each of the focus areas in their entirety, or do you want, do you want to wait? Questions do you have for us after each one? How would you prefer to handle that?
Whatever the pleasure of Jim and Verona is. I think it'd be better, yeah, Ms. Fixon, just kind of go through the presentation, then we can do two and a half. Yeah.
Okay. Our second focus area this year has been looking at the master, the current master schedule, the way that the day is organized for our students and thinking closely and critically about whether the current iteration of the schedule is really meeting our kids' needs. This is not, this is something that has been a point of conversation at Pierce at different points in time in recent history. And there is, you know, I sense an appetite to make some changes and to move forward. And there have been always been challenges to this, that there are any, changing the national schedule at any school. And I'm sure that James contested this one, and the high school did this recently. But one of the, really the straw that broke the camel's back for us is the issue of overcrowding in our cafeteria. As you're, as aware, I know when the school building committee came through back in the fall and winter, our cafeteria doesn't have the capacity to feed in higher grade at a time anymore. The capacity of that space is 332 or so students. And we currently have a sixth grader that's over 350. Next year, we have a sixth grader that's over 360. So we really needed to look at our schedule and, if nothing else, for a practical way of looking at how might we technically feed students in a way that is more aligned to the capacity of our cafeteria. That ended up being a launching point and sort of a good reason to continue to forge ahead with making, unpacking the current schedule, looking at what parts of it we wanted to maintain and where our opportunities to improve were. So another challenge that surfaced is the fact that all the periods are stagnant. So students and teachers are seeing each other at the same times of the day, every day. So the student who might be late in the morning or off in the morning or are sort of cognitively spent by the end of the day, teachers and students are seeing each other, they're seeing each other at the same time every day. An interesting piece that came out of this, when we did some analysis of our discipline data, we were finding that the most common time for disciplinary infractions to take place were in the middle of the day, around lunchtime, which corresponded both with probably students needing their physical needs being met, but also those were the exploratory times, types of exploratory, off-teen classes. So the stagnation of the periods presented a challenge to both, honestly, for both students and for teachers. There was an appetite to look for ways to potentially lengthen our instructional periods from what's currently 48 minutes to something a little bit more. And one of the current challenges to the schedule is that students go from 7:57 to 2:26 all day. There's very little time, with the exception of the three minutes that they have in between classes to negotiate passing time. Particularly for younger students who move from elementary school and having that break in the day of recess. But there is, students have full schedules. So we see sort of developmentally, this is a time, if there is, as much as any, where they need that break in the day. So to try to think about ways that we can create spaces for that to happen. So if we move from the challenges of our current master schedule to what we saw as assumptions or core components of our new schedule, the first is four lunches. We need to be able to feed students safely in a timely fashion. And frankly, for a lot of our students, lunch, which should be their downtime of the day, is one of the most stressful times of the day because of the overcrowding in the cafeteria. So by having a fourth lunch period, we're able to move from 330, 340, 350 students at a time to probably 250 or 260 who are eating simultaneously. Core, next core component, and this is a huge one particularly for the instructional program, is a rotating schedule. So now students and teachers will be seeing each other at different points in the day. So if I have math, my first period of the day today, I'm going to have a second period of the day tomorrow, and so on. So to be able to give opportunities for teachers to see each other at their best at different points in time of the day. In our new schedule, we will be able to extend instructional periods from 48 minutes, I believe it was 55 minutes. But even that few more minutes opens up some more doors for instructional opportunities for teachers. And the fourth component, which is really exciting, and this is what really gets at, providing a break for students during the day is what we're calling flex time. So flex time is, will be a 20-minute time during the day where we shut off instruction and give students a chance to just have some downtime to reflect, to regenerate, to refocus, with the hope that they'll be more ready to learn throughout the day. During this time, they'll be, students will be in classes, they will be supervised, but they just have some choice for how they will spend that time in the middle of the day. And it'll be either before or after when they eat lunch. So it's sort of a natural time to decompress. So they would have choices to do things like homework, or to relax, just relax, or to make up work. They can organize their materials, they can do quiet activities. This is something that we see as really being, in addition to the rotating periods, at the core of a schedule that meets the contemporary needs of our students. And subsequently, we also see flex time as being the eventual structure for an advisory period, for an advisory program, which again, there is an appetite, and there has been among our faculty, to develop and implement an advisory program. And this would likely provide the type of structure that we would need to do that. The next focus area is around supporting students' transitions from fifth grade to sixth grade. So there's currently some really great structures that are in place, that are in place during a typical school year. We have our fifth grade information night, we do our visits and step-up We have our fifth grade information night, we do our visits and step-up days in the spring. Obviously, you know, goes without saying that unfortunately, these won't be happening, happening in the same ways that they have in the past, but we're going to make, we're going to be creative and find ways to replicate these experiences for students' families. Other current structures, the welcome to middle school camp, hopefully by the end of summer, we'll be able to get back in the building and to, to do camp. And also the sixth grade families night, which we do right before school starts. So these are all wonderful and important structures that are currently in place. But as a council, we've, we've talked, we've talked quite a bit about how might we do this more, how can we do this better? And this is a conversation that's extended outside of the site council, frankly, into our, our sixth grade faculty. And our sixth grade faculty has been a room of time as a grade level, and then as, there's a smaller group that has been working to rethink how we can better support the transition of fifth graders into sixth grade. So current work of sixth graders, Carrie, do you mind talking a little bit about some of the work that the sixth grade teachers, the conversations that have been having, we've been having at grade level meetings, and some of the work that I know people like you and Genevieve have been involved with, talking about the transition?
So we, so we were talking about, one, just how we could like transition the fifth graders at the beginning, or like in the spring, but obviously that's not going to happen. But even just coming up with ways in which we present the students all the same information, giving them like a first few days of, you know, like in, instead of doing social studies, we're going to do like getting to know your school. Instead of science, we're going to learn like rules and regulations. So that way, they're all getting the same message, and then we're going to be more making sure we're collaborating and they're all getting the same message. We're going to come up with like a system of helping them organize their homework, because this is really the first time they're going for six or seven classes, depending on the schedule. We talked about it with seven classes. So it's the first time they're going to be going and seeing seven, eight, nine different teachers, depending on your schedule. So coming up with an organizational system that everyone starts the beginning of the school year off at, instead of trying, instead of kids having to struggle the first like month of school and then trying to put these into place. So it's like literally hitting the ground running of, these are the organizational systems. When we have that flex time in the schedule, coming up with like themes, so like Monday is you guys are going to clean out your lockers, Tuesday, we're going to work on these strategies. So having those actual lessons on how to organize themselves, because again, going from fifth grade where they have one, maybe two teachers, to having seven different classes all over the building, they do need that support. So we're explicitly teaching ways to organize and help them out, and then actually coming up with systems that have been beneficial to students. So essentially having all students do that to try to have that success right at the beginning of the year.
Carrie, thank you. And I can also say, one of the other strategies that we were hoping to put in place, but obviously without being in school, won't be able to. It struck me and several of us as part of our, reflecting on some of the classroom observations that our team of teachers did during the ELA curriculum review, in which we had middle school teachers going to the elementary schools. And one of our teachers reflected on the fact that how little experience, or how little familiarity sixth grade teacher really have with what a fifth grade class looks like and feels like. And so we were in the process of planning for our sixth grade teachers to go visit and do classroom observations of our fifth grade classes across the four elementary schools to, again, to help equip our teachers with a better sense of the, because of composition, the expectations of the fifth grade classrooms, to have a better sense of what our students are coming to us with. And I know that was universally welcomed by, by the four elementary principals, but I want to acknowledge that as another really kind of out-of-the-box creative way of thinking about how, demonstrating our teachers' commitment to doing the best they can by our, by our students, by our new students. In leveraging opportunities to support the transition for our parents, one, I think it's safe to say, during transitions, whether they be entering kindergarten, entering sixth grade, entering ninth grade, often these transitions are just as challenging for parents and guardians as they are for our kids. So we have a few, we had a group of sixth grade teachers who have been, I believe Carrie was involved with this as well, Genevieve Marlet taking the lead on it. And what we've been talking about is replicating what was a really successful initiative back in the fall, parent university. And having a parent university for our sixth, solely for our sixth grade parents and guardians to focus on some of the really common differences and common challenges that are encountered by our sixth grade families as they transition from elementary to middle, particularly if it's with their oldest child. So having, inviting our sixth grade parents and guardians in, and to be, to be led through small sessions like we did in parent university with our sixth grade teachers, with our staff around, you know, how do you negotiate the portal in Google Classroom, what's the setting, what's different? Working with, partnering with families on how we work together to help develop and support students' executive functioning and organizational skills, providing subject-specific information. In previous years, when there was, these parents and families were receiving MCAS reports, how, working with them, how they interpret what those mean, those reports mean for their children. And another idea that we're hoping to enact is the idea of rethinking open house, where open house is an incredibly overwhelming experience, particularly for our sixth grade parents, who I think are nervous anyway about their child's transition as they're trying to experience their day. And they're being rushed around a huge building, both class to class, for 10 minutes at a time, I think a lot, a lot of times can sort of take on stress for their children. So the idea is to, in rethinking open house, to have a separate open house, a sixth grade family open house, separate from a seventh, eighth grade family open house, to give our sixth grade families a little bit more time and space to become familiar with, with their child's, their children's surroundings. I know this is, again, this has been, this has been an important and pretty significant point of conversation as a site council. Are any of our parents willing to sort of chime in and talk a little bit about your experiences as, as a new middle school parent, or in seeing your children, you know, the differences in your children over time as they made the transition from fifth to sixth grade?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit, Bill. This is again Dana Jessup Turner. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I mentioned I have a current seventh grader. And when she started in sixth grade, it was so easy just to feel disconnected, didn't know the systems. She was navigating a lot, and so turning to her as a resource wasn't getting me too far. The sixth grade, well, the open house, which was my big opportunity right at first to learn as much as possible, as Bill said, was just totally exhausting. It was like 98 degrees that day as well. And it was just, I was overwhelming in a way that I can only imagine what it must have been like for my daughter. And so, you know, something like a sixth grade, a specific open house, where parents of sixth graders who, having been with myself, just come in with so many questions, and having that room to, to breathe and to be able to ask those questions, and to kind of do so in an environment that feels dialed down a little bit in terms of the intensity, just to kind of take some of that stress and anxiety out of the whole experience, I think would just be so welcome. And I just, I wanted to add as well that, you know, all of the creative thinking that I think we've been doing in terms of how we prepare our kids for that transition to middle school. I mentioned I have twins who are in fifth grade, who are rising during this very challenging time. The creativity, the out-of-the-box thinking, you know, being ahead of ourselves in some ways, given what we're facing now, we're going to have to continue to think creatively about how to create a community, how to create a sense of togetherness, how to create, you know, networks among parents at a time where, you know, we're really challenged to come together as communities. And so even something like just the forethought that Bill brought to the scheduling, where we think about flex time, or we think about a break in the day or an advisory period, you know, it's that kind of creative thinking that's also going to, I think, really help our two kids transition in a year that, you know, everything looks really uncertain. So I so appreciate that additional thoughtfulness in terms of how our kids are spending their days, and look forward to, you know, continuing to work together and be creative in our trying times as to how we can support our kids and each other.
Dana, thank you. I, interestingly, I had a conversation with a parent today of a fifth grader who has, so rising sixth grader, and it dawned on me during that conversation that, and I almost, I cut myself in that crowd, I also have a fifth grader who will come to Pierce next year. And for as much uncertainty as there is in what's going on now, and as presumably as much as this could put a wrench into that transition time, it dawned on me, it's arguably could also be one of the most nurturing times for a transition, knowing what we know and knowing how we'll plan for the fall and welcoming all students back, particularly for the students who are making that transition. This, this could potentially be the time where we'll be able to really think hard about how we welcome a new group of students to our school in the face of the interruption that they've had to their learning, and potentially drawing this as a really, trying to find the silver lining of it, like this could potentially be one of the best times to make a transition based on the ways that we'll, we'll be prepared and to bring, to bring our star kids back in the fall.
Yeah, that's a good way to look at it. And all of the creativity that's going to come with having to think about this differently, I feel like as a site council, we were really ahead of the game and already thinking just creatively about how to support our students.
Dana, thank you. All right, our final focus area for the year, which has been, I've put this less in the, in the hands, in the grips of the site council, even though the council's been up to speed with this work all along, but most definitely in the, in the frame of, around the frame of school improvement efforts, particularly in the curriculum and instruction area, is the comprehensive English language audit curriculum review that we worked through earlier in the fall. And at this time, I'm going to welcome Kat Rochus, the K-8 Leadership Director. Kat has had, has done tremendous work leading us in, in chairing this work throughout the fall and into the spring. So at this time, I'll turn, turn the presentation over to Kat to start, to the committee a little bit about, you know, where we've been and where we're going.
Thanks, Bill. Hi, everybody. Good to see you all. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about where we are in the process and where we hope to be going forward. So we've had a relationship with Dr. Noni Lasso, the Dean of Education at Harvard since 2016 as a district. She helped the district to reflect on our elementary approach to literacy instruction. And through that process, we did an analysis of what was happening at the time, a needs assessment of what, where the gaps were, and a selection process for curriculum. So we're continuing that relationship and growing up the process of, of good reflection on curriculum and instruction, which all disciplines do. So this is where we are at the middle school this year. So we gathered a team of interdisciplinary teachers, administrators. Bill has been an integral member of the committee as well. We had teachers all the way from grade four to grade eight. We wanted to examine the pathway that students experience literacy instruction in a vertical sense. So what was a student experiencing? We often grouped literacy instruction in that four to eight age group, in particular, how it shifts from the K to three model. And so we took a three-pronged approach to analyzing what was happening. We looked at data, specifically MCAS internal literacy screening, as well as classroom-based data. We then looked at the existing curriculum through a series of panel presentations from teachers who are teaching those grade levels. And then we also conducted 70 classroom observations from grades four to eight. And that was a smaller group of classroom teachers, as well as administrators, who visited classrooms throughout the district at every school in grades four to eight. And we called that data and looked at all of those three sets to come to some conclusions about where we are and where we, where we are going towards, to make sure that our students are getting the best possible experience and materials. And so I won't read this slide to you. It's, it's quite robust in the conclusions that came out of that analysis of the data. Two really big things to consider that we discussed at length was the, was looking to increase the amount and variety of text that students in grade six to eight are interacting with. We also looked at really moving the connection of reading and academic language, and that work that is strongly connected, both written and in oral form. So the collaboration of students in classrooms, academic language enrich experiences of synthesizing an argument and, you know, analyzing data from, and literacy sources from, from multiple visual experiences and reading and auditory and all those things. So we were able to, to identify that our shift was going to be to research the current hallmarks of literacy, develop a rubric, and then look to analyze a few curricula that are out there, that are getting high marks from ed reports and those types of sources. So this is the list that we are currently looking at, my perspectives, which is out of Pearson, Amplify, Witten Wisdom, and Expeditionary Learning. So currently, we are in the process of hearing, so we had to shift, of course, as everyone did, from looking at the materials and spending some time as a team, looking at these materials and poring over them, using the rubric that we established as, as a group. We had to shift from that to getting a virtual webinar for each of these companies. And we are halfway through, we've heard from two of the four. We're still using the rubric established through best practices. Noni Lasso helped to do a lot of that development. She's still very much involved. And we are hearing from the last two by the end of the week, and we hope to be able to really meet as a group in the second week in May to, to make a decision, an informed decision together. So we're hoping to select, you know, in the next few weeks, and then be able to really dive into the professional development that we need to provide to teachers and staff so that it can be implemented with fidelity and energy in the fall. And then we will, of course, have ongoing professional development for teachers, both internally and with whatever resources, whatever curriculum we select offers. So it's been a really solid process with strong support from both Central Office, Mr. Fish, and, and everyone that's been involved, which is all the teachers at Pearson Middle School in the ELA department. So it's been great.
Awesome, Kat, thank you.
Sure.
So it's rounding out our presentation. Obviously, we've presented what has caught our attention and our efforts and our time since the fall. But as we think about those identified opportunities inherent in those, our opportunities for continued school improvement that's grounded in those big areas. As I mentioned before, we talked about the demographic shifts that we're all experiencing across the community, negotiating enrollments is going to be, there's no way for that to not be a tremendous part of our conversation as we think about class sizes, space, et cetera, moving forward between, from now through the next five and six years. Other opportunities for school improvement, continued professional development around one-to-one computing, as we, next, as we implement the new schedule, reviewing and evaluating it for efficacy to ensure that it's actually meeting the targets that we set, as continue to implement and refine those transition strategies. Obviously, as, you know, Kat mentioned in the presentation, it can't be overstated what it means to overhaul one of the core content areas of an entire school. So that curriculum implementation will be months and years to make. And one of the, one of the things, sort of unrelated to site council, but is important to keep in our vision for continued school improvement, is the Pearson University Committee has been doing some tremendous work in unpacking and understanding the, the participation gap that exists in school. I know it's part of the district strategic plan to close that participation gap as we close our achievement gap. But that will also be a guidepost for, for our efforts, continued efforts for school. So I'm going to start sharing my screen, and I'm seeing what are questions that you all have for us, we'd be happy to answer at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fish and everyone, for a great, detailed presentation of our efforts. I'm going, especially because we're virtual, I'm going to go around to the committee and see if they have questions or queries. I'll start with number white.
I just have terrific compliments to all of your team for a great presentation.
I just have terrific compliments to all of your team for a great presentation. I really loved the way you spoke about the transitions and your focus for making the cafeteria experience a little bit easier for the kids, because we've been hearing a lot about that. And the idea that you're connecting all the developmental, you know, developmental needs for these children around the way you look at the schedule, even the flexibility and rotating the schedule so that if you're not a morning person, you're not going to get, you know, struggled with the same subject in the morning that where you're not really here 100% functioning yet. So I just think you did a great job. And I mean, middle school's a special place and with special needs. And I think that I'm very interested to see how the transition for the fifth graders, current fifth graders go heading up to the middle school, but certainly in Dedham, where I work, we're looking at that because there's so much anxiety about that transition. So I love the way you thought about it as a new opportunity to really be a nurturing opportunity for the kids. I like that thinking. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty.
Member Rosemary.
There we go. Hi, thank you so much for your presentation. It's really great to hear about all the work your site council's been doing and a lot of creative thinking and great ideas for how to move Pearson to the next level. I'm fascinated and curious of how you found more minutes in the day to make the periods longer and to allow for flex time. I just think it's like magic. I'm just curious, how did you do it?
There were a few things, Ada, once with that rotating schedule, there's, students have seven periods in their schedule, only six will meet a day, the seventh one will drop. And so we're with that rotation. So for example, whatever drops today, students will have first period tomorrow. So the minutes, as you extend the instructional time in the periods, there is a little bit of a loss. And obviously, there needs to be somewhere to put the 20 minutes of flex time, but we have taken the position that that time is so important to give our kids to recharge and to be ready for learning, that we would rather have them ready and have them for 20 less minutes every seven days than to run them random.
Yeah, sometimes that, like in my class, I'll have them like do organizing so they're already losing minutes to help organize. So having that designated 20 minutes will be a huge help and an overall thing. And it will help try to prevent like breakdowns from happening because they don't have certain things.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And also really taken with your plans around the transition to sixth grade, which we've been hearing about from the elementary schools about the challenges there and the notion of having teachers and staff visiting the fifth grades to get a sense of where the kids are at, I think will really help inform that transition. It's a great idea and best of luck to you. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, Ada.
Member, Dr. John here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Excellent, all right, great. So a couple comments, probably a few for the record, as they say. So I'm thrilled that we were able to implement one-to-one computing just before this crisis. As you said, the timing couldn't have been better or worse, as the case may be. I will be interested to see as the next few years roll forward, less a question, more a comment. I think, Dr. Pavlichek, we typical budget replacement costs one-fifth per year or thereabouts, more or less.
That's correct.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's a combination of wear and tear loss and operating system upgrade, et cetera. So it'll be interesting as we, to see how that sort of pans out as we move forward with a one-to-one ratio at the high school and middle school and hopefully at the elementary schools. Plus a question or a comment. Let's see, I think, remember Rosemary, and I agree wholeheartedly with your comments about the upcoming fifth graders. I think Principal Fish is, I'm looking forward to this opportunity, as he called it, to integrate them into the middle school. Has there been any, building off your earlier comments, has there been any thought to implementing a, is this sort of the scheduling reconfiguration of block schedule? In particular, at the eighth grade or maybe in the seventh grade, in sort of preparation of leading them into the high school schedule?
There was, I mean, we looked, Dr. Don, at several different versions, iterations of what the schedule would look like. And sometimes there, you know, limitations were structural in nature, like what getting the four lunches in. Others are probably developmental in nature, where moving students, even rising eighth graders from a 48-minute schedule to a 70 or 80-minute schedule, or even looking earlier developmentally at an 11-year-old coming to hold their attention for 70 to 80 minutes. So a true block schedule was never really on the priority list, but mostly because, you know, I guess, sort of drawing on my high school background, that's more developmentally appropriate for that 15-day age group.
I think that's understandable and reasonable. And like I said, thank you for your consideration of it. It was nice to see your integration of, I think sometimes when people think about one-to-one and technology, they think that they sort of have a STEM bias, which is unfortunate. It was nice to see your inclusion of some non-STEM disciplines, humanities, the performing arts, the fine arts. In your presentation, that was appreciated. And I will be, I think this is more common for me and the central office. I'd be interested to see how our central, how our internal data pans out this year. I think in particular, where there is no MCAS this year, it's going to show the importance of having internal testing that correlates well with MCAS performance. And it will be interesting to see what our, what our sort of limited formal internal data has for this year. And I think my final comment is that, based on your slideshow, it's about 35 years too late, but I would love to show it to Mr. Lanigan to show that that was in fact a science experiment that I was doing in this history class.
Member, Emma Frank.
Yeah, the presentation was wonderful. And I'm really thrilled with the social emotional aspects of all the changes that you're making to the schedule, the flex time, thinking about an advisory period. I think moving forward for students, particularly in the next couple of years, supporting that social emotional piece as they move from the heavy emphasis on that now at the elementary level with PIS up to the middle school will be crucial for their, for their development and their success. And then supporting parents through the parent university in the same way is really terrific. And yeah, I've been thinking a lot about what will stick for everyone with regard to this, what is it, with regard to the, this pandemic and the closure and what we learned about the way children learn and how we can incorporate those things into their daily lives and career. Be interesting to see what sticks. I'm kind of curious about the ELA curriculum, and I'm just sort of wondering, this is a, so I have two questions. Have we ever had a structured ELA curriculum like this at the middle school before?
So the current curriculum is structured around the standards and is being taught through a variety of texts currently. It's not what you would consider like a boxed curriculum, which is more what we're looking at, less because it's boxed and more because it, because the standards have evolved, as you know, as an educator, over the years. It becomes, excuse me, a lot more robust in terms of the 21st century skills. So again, like especially with this current remote plan, you know, looking at how we engage students with a blended approach, both in person and online. So yeah, so the short answer is yes, their approach is standards-based, our approach is standards-based. It's not what we would consider like a boxed curriculum.
Because I looked up while you were, I didn't remember seeing that slide before, so I was looking up on my iPad while you guys were talking at some of the things around the slide. And I was kind of curious about, are you thinking about how it relates to the curriculum that you use in elementary school? Like, is there any correlation between the way that the one is structured that, you know, the National Geographic one, reach for reading, and then what will translate in as you move up? And then does, do all of these sort of incorporate novels? Because you talked a lot about that, sort of how you incorporate different types of texts and readings for students. Just curious.
Yeah, that's a great question. So one thing we did that's unique, if anyone's been involved in a curriculum review knows that classroom is not typically something you do outside of your, like, grade team or work department. So for us to have done it with a team of middle school teachers and administrators that spanned elementary into middle, the purpose was, to your question, to really look at, what is it like to be a fourth or fifth grade student learning English Language Arts in the Milton public schools? And what is that then, how does that translate up vertically? So we want to make sure that kids are getting not necessarily the same curriculum, but the same type of experience. Are we encouraging, you know, robust conversations? Are we using a variety of texts? Are we, do we have access? Have we provided our teachers with the resources to do so? And I think not necessarily less focused, I think, on the, like, the National Geographic reach for reading, more looking at the hallmarks of the literacy instruction, as well as like good practice and, you know, the approach in that way. So that's where the rubric came in. But it's a good question because we did focus on, you know, looking at that vertical articulation.
I think it's all great work, and I congratulate all of you. And I look forward to seeing more as time unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Before I move on to Dr. Crackett, I just want to know, I know there's some parents maybe still on the line. Again, I know some people came in late, and I announce this at the top, and I know a lot of people aren't familiar with the structure of the school committee, the school committee meeting, but there is citizen speak at the beginning, first thing at the beginning of the meeting, and there's citizen speak at the end. And there will be a portion of citizen speak at the end. I apologize, but we're following the agenda as is. And we have the rest of the Pierce presentation and Chair's report, finance subcommittee to deal with, school building report. But there will be a citizen speak at the end of the meeting. Again, please do not keep the chat going because this is a formal meeting with presentation and following our rules of order. You're not allowed to poke in and speak. It would be like people were interjecting or raising their hand. Totally respect and understand that people don't know the procedure. So I'm just reiterating that. Again, I will, I will call to a citizen speak and people can sign up to speak on the chat. I'll open the chat up again. They can say their name and their street address, and they will be given a chance to speak. So I just ask that people not continue to put things in the chat while people are presenting and to be respectful. Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Crackett.
Okay. I love the fact that all of the things that I saw that you were changing and wanting to change were data-driven. Even the stagnation factor with the students, you went and looked at where the disciplinary actions were most common and went from there. And the data collection on the ELA review was amazing to me, that you got 70 observations and put that all together to figure out where you were versus where you needed to be. I think the slide went kind of fast on that one, Kat, or at least for me, because I was looking specifically at, you know, where you were and where you wanted to be, because that's sort of my wheelhouse. But one of the things I noticed was that there's more sort of summary and information gathering where we are versus the higher order critical thinking analysis we want to be. And I applaud you for, you know, emphasizing that in terms of that's where you want them to be, because the sooner you can get them to that, the better. I wanted to say one thing about the, the collaboration that the sixth grade teachers have had about making the transition that Carrie was talking about, and I know you've worked with Jett and Bartland on that. I think it's great. I think all of the things that you said that you were doing are great, and especially that observation of fifth graders, to just see them in action in fifth grade. But I also wonder, because we heard the Colicott presentation earlier this academic year, and Polly Concanon and her site council had a lot of stuff in place that was a little bit different than what the elementary schools have historically done in the past with fifth graders. And I'm wondering if you see an opportunity to collaborate with those fifth grade teachers, as well as all the sixth grade teachers, especially in this era of everything is Zoom. I'm so tired of Zoom meetings, but whatever, here we are. But to see an opportunity to collaborate with those teachers as well and see what they're doing and maybe make connections between what they're doing and what you are doing once they get to the sixth grade. But I think all of that stuff is really, really important. Yeah. So thank you very much for a great presentation, well put together, terrific data. I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, this is Sheila, coming back in. So I mean, again, I'm just going to echo what all of the committee members said. The, I mean, I know the one-to-one, again, we're so glad, especially with the pandemic, that you're one-to-one. The rescheduling to me, I'm with Ada, I'm just, it's jaw-dropping. It's so exciting. It's such a big undertaking. I'm just like, I'm incredibly proud that you guys took such initiative on. It needed to be done. And I just, I'm just very excited too, to see the results of it. And I think it's just a great step in the right direction. Again, the preparation of, for fifth graders, for the families, for the parents, for the students, again, great initiative. And I also just had a quick question, maybe following up from what Margaret said, Kat, on the curriculum. I noticed that on the slide that the programs you have there, so just to, again, to ask what Margaret said, are those, are those like part of a six-eight, like, literature curriculum, like reading literature curriculum? Are they ancillary programs or more of a basal? I know you kept saying about a box, a box curriculum, but is that kind of what, it's something that's a little bit, kind of like our inter-reading, I mean, this is my wheelhouse, you know, that I work at home with Margaret. So I know, I mean, I'm working on a six-eight program now, but so are you looking to take like the six, seven, and eight portions of something like that that have lots of pieces, lots of support? You know, I know in inter-reading, when the site councils come, they just seem so in love with, you know, there's the basal, the core, but there's the big books, there's the read-aloud, all the ancillary material that support the teacher. So the ones that you're looking at, they, I know you said this one, the big one by Pearson, but are the other ones like smaller supplemental stuff? Or is Noni like guiding you guys, working with you on that, if you could speak to it?
Sure. Yeah, so each of those four, we really looked to examine a complete approach to the literacy blocks. So, and I use literacy block loosely, we're not block scheduling, and I know you know that. But we really wanted to ensure that it really encompassed those five key components with the grammar, vocabulary, word study, reading comp, and writing. And so we are looking not to piecemeal something together or retrofit. It's really to look at, how can we provide teachers and students with a really supported set of resources that include whole novels? We're not, you know, it's not, you know, when I think basal, I think of that anthology, and we do have that in the K to five. This is more of, we're using trade books. A lot of these programs have trade books, and they integrate some technology sites and links and videos to help build argument writing and debates and things like that. So it is, it is a complete set of them, not so much of a supplement. So yeah.
That's right. So like, I said, like a lit library as kind of the core with the other stuff built around it. Yeah, okay. That's exciting. So yeah, overall, you know, I mean, great, I'm going to turn it over now to Super Junior normally, but I'm going to say on behalf of me, A+ because this was a great presentation. I know you guys had to wait, and I commend you for that in presenting it in Google Classroom and after a lengthy first good hour of the meeting. So thank you for hanging in and doing such a great job. It's, I'm really excited for you guys and for the Pierce students about next steps in the future. So Superintendent Gormley, do you want to speak to anything? Anyone? Or Dr. Spaulding?
Principal Fish and the peer site council, as Sheila said, outstanding presentation. Phil Fish arrived at the peer school, identified with the site council, the PTO, the staff, the initiatives, they're targeted on those initiatives. I reported that to parents, I reported that to the school committee tonight and on behalf of the district. I can't be more pleased or proud. I saw somebody wrote in about Mike Clary up there and I don't know if he has any kind of word. He's your constant on your site council, but I couldn't be more proud or pleased and for the peer students current and rising fifth graders, the challenge, the standards are there for all students.
Awesome. Well, thank you, everybody, Superintendent Gormley Committee for us, for having us. And thank you to the site council for hanging in there and being patient and for making it a priority to be here tonight for us. So thank you all.
You did an outstanding job. It was an outstanding, it was an outstanding job.
Great.
Thank you.
Here's a site council. Briefly, is it all right, Chairman Vella?
Yeah, back just back to you, still in the superintendent's report. Yeah.
We, the commissioner, Commissioner Riley issued new, issued updated remote learning plan over the weekend. We've worked with our administrators, our curriculum leaders, we work with the union and power standards have been issued, power standards. And we're working at every grade level. As the commissioner said, 80% of those standards were covered, were identifying at every grade level and every discipline which standards were not covered. And our teachers are working tirelessly on this. And the real, as James Jack and one of our attorneys said, the issues keep changing. And now new material will be taught by our teachers remotely to students. And so we, with the collaboration with the MDA, the Milton Educators Association, new remote learning plan is being rolled out tomorrow and discussed and will be, principals, teachers, central office will be communicating with parents and our teachers. So again, we should look for change and the real change is that now we were instructed since the closure to expand on what was already taught to enrich. And now the directive from the commissioner is to move ahead. And so I'll report more on that next, at our next meeting, Chairman Vella. Also, in the interest of time, very briefly, the Collyclot and Tucker both had openings for Assistant Principal Coordinator. And Kristin, Kirsten Driscoll has been appointed at the Tucker, Ellen Lohian at the Collyclot. I would ask the chair if at your next meeting I brought them for you to meet, for us to introduce them to the public. Also on our agenda tonight, but I'm going to ask our food service director, Jackie Morgan, and our technology director, AJ Melanson, to come and they more eloquently than I can really explain to you what's been going on during this school closure. We are organizing and at next week's meeting, Dr. Pavelcheck will outline, we're organizing refunds now that we know schools close for the rest of the year, bus refunds, community schools refunds, a array of different refunds, and we'll share that with the public. We had, we're, Yarney, talking about fifth grade. I put out to the principals and the school committee yesterday that we're going to initiate a reentry task force immediately, looking towards September with technology, athletics, teachers, administrators, school committee members, individuals from the medical field on this task force to start to plan for what the opening of school will look like in September. Today we had a meeting and this fifth to sixth transition is really huge for fifth graders and their parents and guardians and for H and I. So we'll be reporting out to you at every meeting how we're creatively going to take all of the programs Principal Fish referred to and having to do them virtually. We had a meeting, we were waiting for direction from the Department of Education whether or not we'll be holding any summer schools. Parents are calling, they have to make plans around daycare and summer issues. But there is a question whether the schools will even be opening this summer. But we stay in touch with the school committee and we'll communicate, obviously, with parents immediately. We are registering children into the Milton Public Schools weekly. Three, we registered three children today. The family just bought a house in Milton Public Schools, integrating those children at the different levels into remote learning. But I would urge anyone in the viewing public, next week we're going to do a presentation to you on our kindergarten and first grade enrollment. And so we are open. And so if you are viewing or you know anyone with a rising kindergartner, I would encourage you to have them contact. We're here every single day. Serena Burke, our registration representative, is registering incoming kindergarteners. And so that's an important part of the process that's continuing to move on. And so we're putting out a blog tomorrow, but next week, Chairman Vella, a lot of what we're going to share tonight, we'll bring the actual individuals and have very brief presentations, but you can hear from them in the school committee, ask them questions. Thank you.
That sounds great. Next, the chair's report. Underneath my report, the first thing we need to address is, as you know, we're a member of the South Shore Educational Collaborative and we need to do a yearly, I think, do we have to do a formal vote to appoint Superintendent Gormley as our representative on that South Shore Collaborative?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to, that we continue to appoint and keep Superintendent Mary Gormley as our representative on the South Shore Educational Collaborative for the 2020, 2020 to 2021 school year. Seconded by Member White. We'll have to do a roll call vote, so Member White?
Yes.
Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
Member Everhart?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Dr. Crackett? Can't hear you. Dr. Crackett?
Hello? You guys all just froze on me, so I'm trying to get back in. Yeah, I vote yes.
Okay. And Member Varela, yes, it's unanimous to appoint Superintendent Gormley as our representative of the South Shore Educational Collaborative for the school year of 2020 to 2021. Next, on the chair's report is to report out on the Unit D ratification, but I'm going to hand that over. Dr. Crackett or Dr. Donahue, are you doing that together or one of you is doing D? You see, I couldn't remember. If you could speak to it.
I'm doing D, but I can't see anybody and I'm sort of switching things up.
We can hear you and see you, hon. We can hear and see you. Queers Day.
Can you hear me? Probably can't hear back in. Text me. Hello? We can see you.
Yeah.
Okay. Unit D, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, okay. I can hear you.
That's it.
We can hear you.
She said Unit D was ratified.
That's all you have to say?
That's all you have to say. Okay. Super, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, number C on the chair's report. It's just, again, I guess to take a look at the school year calendar. It was attached to our materials for the rest of the year. I guess, I'm going to say Superintendent Gormley, I mean, for next, for next meeting, which is next week, we have a school choice hearing. The issues that you said, I'm going to bring Jackie Morgan and AJ Melanson to talk about both technology and food service right now. We also have a school choice vote that we have to do. Also, the transportation contract vote. So I guess Assistant Superintendent Pavelcheck, will, will we have something to look at or are you supposed to speak to about transportation for next year?
That should be ready for next week. We had an initial bid opening today. Our consultant is looking over the bids to see what a recommendation will be for us. We should have that within the next couple of days and I'll have something for you next week.
Okay, great. And then also we have Milton High School. As I think, as Mr. Jeff said, it's just going to do a state-of-the-state on the high school and where they're at, a presentation for this year and the remaining of the year. So it's pretty, it's a pretty full agenda. I don't know, is there anything we want to move to the 27th? Right now in the 27th, all we have is a superintendent's evaluation and she's going to report out on her mid-year evaluation. But I don't, or do you think that we have school choice, Milton High School, state-of-the-state, transportation, and school choice vote? And then we only have one thing on the superintendent's evaluation? So what do you think?
I can move the transportation and food service to that next meeting.
So you want to, so you want to take, you want to take transportation to the 27th and food services to the 27th and keep AJ on for the sixth, the Milton High School school choice hearing and to vote? Yes?
I think we want to move AJ Melanson and Jackie Morgan to the 27th because I think, Dr. Crackett, I think Dr. Pavelcheck will need the sixth. You think he'll be ready for the sixth on the transportation?
I was just going to, go ahead, Glenn.
I believe we'll be in the sixth for transportation.
Okay. Member, Member Crackett, what do you?
I was just going to say, the only thing we really can't move is school choice because we can't do it later because they, the information needs to be in by June 1st.
Right.
So we have to handle that sooner rather than later.
Okay. So Superintendent Gormley, Dr. Pavelcheck said he'd be ready for transportation by the sixth, but would you want to move that to the 27th?
Well, if it's all right, I'll move food service and AJ Melanson.
To the 27th?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so just again to clear it, we have Milton High School, state-of-the-state, transportation, and school choice at this, on May 6th, and superintendent's evaluation, technology update, and food services on the 27th. Okay, great. All right, moving on to finance subcommittee. Dr. Crackett?
Okay, I can see everybody again, so this is lovely. I'm striking B under my report. I should have done that at the beginning when we were looking at the agenda, but I did not.
No, I struck it at the beginning of the agenda.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't hear that then, so clearly I won't be following along. All right, so as to the fiscal year 21 budget, thanks to the work of Town and County Amy Dexter and our own Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Pavelcheck, we know, and any of you who saw the, or were in on the select board meeting last night, some of this was made clear, is that the worst-case scenario that has been projected by Ms. Dexter and Dr. Pavelcheck is that we will be somewhere between a $2.5 and a $3 million shortfall for town and school combined. In order to close that gap, last night at the select board meeting, the members in the select board voted unanimously, I believe, to approve up to a million dollars being used from the stabilization fund to, to help to close that gap. In addition, free cash will be used to help close the gap. Of course, capital improvement planning committee will need to meet again to make those final, to make a final vote because they had voted to, to use quite a bit of the free cash or capital items. This also means that we probably, in all likelihood, will not get any of the four new positions that we had been approved for up to that point before this financial crisis hit, nor the extra bus that we desperately need. But revenue, funding for various sources, et cetera, is still up in the air. So the difficulty at this point is that we don't really have any absolute numbers and we won't probably even have them when we hold town meeting. And that will probably be virtual, if you got the message from moderator, Hiss. In any case, that's the update on fiscal year 21. We're looking okay for fiscal year 20, mostly because various services that we would have been paying for and various, what's the word that I'm looking for? The electricity, the water, what are those called?
Cities.
Yes. Those are down now, right? We're not having to pay nearly as much water and the, et cetera. So we're, you know, we're looking fine for fiscal year 20, even though revenues are down. But it's really the, the difficulty, the real challenge is going to come in the next fiscal year, but we're all working on it. Our finance subcommittee, along with the finance subcommittee at the select board, we're all working together, meeting regularly and trying to hammer out various solutions. So the last thing I have to do is to, is to make a motion to approve the two vendor warrants. I'm going to do them together. I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number 41 dated April 9th, 2020 in the amount of $192,078.65 and vendor warrant number 43 dated April 23rd, 2020 in the amount of $253,610.89.
Second.
Second, great. And this will be a roll call vote. Member White?
abstain.
Abstain. Member Everhart?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
Chair Varela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that's 5-0-1. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Crackett. Okay, moving on, we have number seven, school building committee report. Member Rose Maron?
Yes. This is a quick item, but it's a good news item. I'm very pleased to report that today we just clicked send on submitting our statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So it is very, very exciting to get that off our desk and onto theirs. But it's, it's, after a six-week delay from when we were supposed to have met with the select board right before schools closed and a crazy time in mid-March, we finally did meet with the select board just a week ago and received unanimous approval from the select board to move this forward. Town Clerk Susan Galvin stepped in quickly and certified that vote and got that documentation to us and we submitted that today. So we will, we are now into the School Building Authority pipeline and let's just keep our fingers crossed that they let us in. But we will see. This takes. But we will see, this, this takes, we will probably get a final answer as to whether we're invited into the next phase, which is the eligibility phase, sometime in either December of 2020 or January 2021. So we've got a long ways to go, but we couldn't take this first step without having done what we just accomplished today.
Thank you, Ada, and thank you again for your, you and Member White, for your continued work and representation on behalf of us on that building committee, super important committee, so kudos to both of you and thank you for keeping it moving forward. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We are, we received the April 1st minutes from our meeting 2020. Maureen Kennedy should have emailed and cascaded them out to all of you. I'm going to make a motion to approve them. I'm going to make a motion, formal motion, to approve the minutes of the April 1st, 2020 school committee meeting.
Second.
Any comments, edits, changes before we move forward? Okay, roll call, Dr. Krakhead?
Yes.
Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Member Everhard?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Varela, yes, okay, we're there. Old buildings, we can skip over. Number 10, citizen speak response. I think most of us addressed that for the first round of citizen speak. Next meeting agendas, we already covered that in the calendar. So I'm going to move on to citizen speak number two. I'm going to open up the chat box and I'm going to look at, see who would like to speak. Carrie Curley, Carrie, are you still on? And would you like to speak at citizen speak? I have anything to say?
Would I be?
Yeah, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to start by saying, this is so impressive. Like, I'm impressed by all of you and it's just amazing to see what goes on in the background, like of Milton Public Schools. And I just want to say thank you, first off. I think Bill Fish and Janie have been an amazing addition to, you know, listening to all of their ideas was just, I'm truly blown away. But anyway, I also want to say I have four children in the Milton Public School and I am so impressed with their teachers as far as how they've come up with unique ways to engage my children in learning. And I have no worries whatsoever that their education is continuing and is amazing. So here I am with a senior at Milton High and, you know, top guys. Like, I'm just being honest. And I want to say that I just don't understand why April 29th, we need to make this decision. And I know that Mr. Jett mentioned, you know, that perhaps, you know, it would disappoint the kids if he said it was going to happen June 30th and then if he said it was going to happen in July and then if he said it was going to happen in August. I think we'd all prefer to have that disappointment. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Like, I just think, I feel like we're dumping the gun. And I, this whole thing is a nightmare and I get it, but I wish we could take a deep breath and take it day by day and week by week before making such a rash decision as to, we're going to pull up in a car and have the kids be handed a diploma. I just, I don't agree with it. It sounds like the decision is made and that, and it is what it is, but that's just my feelings. So I appreciate you all and I love James Jett and I, you know, love Bill Fish and, you know, it's, they're all awesome and I know everyone is struggling, but I think we can do better, I really do.
Thank you, Carrie, for your words. Kevin Swanton, are you on there? Would you still like to speak? Kevin Swanton? Okay, I'm moving on. Aaron, is it Richard? And could you just state your address if you're on?
Good.
Aaron Richard, are you on? Okay, moving on. Lily Fallon, I see that you say that, is it your father would like to speak? Mrs. Fallon, Tim Fallon, are you on? And could you state your address?
I think people are having trouble with their mic, Sheila.
Okay. Just unmute yourself.
Oh, they are.
Okay. There you go.
We good?
Yeah.
Tim Fallon, I live at 93 Keria. I'd like to first thank everybody for their time and effort on this issue. My daughter is a senior and moved over from Notre Dame Academy in sophomore year. And as I told Mary Gormly and Mr. Jett, it is the best decision that I and my wife have ever made. Wonderful experience, well, nice bet. And always a but, but I am struggling with this decision, the decision on the 27th of April to stick with the date and come up with, I really am struggling, given what my daughter's going through the last month or so and all her friends have gone through. And I just question, like, what do you have to lose to make it to August 10th? Let's have the caravan on August 10th. If we can make the decision to just say, let's do it. And if you're probably making that decision, if you can throw out 231 lawn signs in a night, you can survey the parents, you can probably make the decision to move it to August, work with the community, police, fire, your EMS provider, and come up with a plan. Call it Plan B, call it Plan A. Plan A would be, how can we put together a safe, operationalize a safe, somewhat normal graduation for these kids? And I, you know, I've been, I've been in pre-hospital care and for my life, 14 years, in this town for 30 years. I've worked with brilliant police chiefs, brilliant fire chiefs, docs at the hospital, my former staff at your ALS provider. I'm pretty confident that we could come up with a plan today that would fit today's needs on August 15th. And assuming, we're all hoping that COVID would lessen, maybe you could add food in between, in the meantime. And if it doesn't work, if COVID doesn't go away or if the rules don't permit you, if the landscape does not allow it, then we just have the caravan. You know, you just do the caravan. And I think that that's my, for me, you know, I was listening to all this feedback earlier to Mr. Jett and I was looking for a reason not to call. That's a good reason. I almost wanted to ask if there was an operational plan to have a graduation. And then was that weighed against the operational plan to have a caravan? It all comes with the date, kind of. I get, I get the June 5th, I get the June 7th or whatever, the date. If you can move the date, talk to the parents. Plan A, you have a somewhat of a graduation. I've already seen a model, an architect friend of mine sent me a model. Social distancing, 15 feet apart.
Do you need to hear Varela? That's three minutes.
Okay. Okay.
That's it?
Yeah, three minutes, those are the rules, Mr. Fallon.
Love you all and have a great day.
All right, thank you for speaking. All right, I'm going to go back to Aaron Richard from 41 Ferncraft. Are you able to go on? Can I ping some of you if you push star six, if you're having trouble being heard? So star six, Mr. Richard from 41 Ferncraft?
Yeah, hi Sheila, actually it's Tara.
Okay.
Horribly. I'll turn it down, okay. Am I going horribly, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, you're better now, go ahead. Yep, no worries.
Okay, so, yeah, the issue was that we had some, whatever. We didn't join with the audio and that's what messed me up. Anyway, so thank you Milton High School boosters and others involved for the lawn signs. It was a nice gesture in challenging times. To the Milton Public School Administration and School Committee, your drive-through graduation plan is very detailed and it clearly took considerable effort to work out those details. But sometimes we spend a lot of time on details only to realize later that we are missing the big picture. And I think you're missing the big picture here. Many colleges conferred degrees on their scheduled dates, so graduates may begin their postgraduate education and employment, but they plan to let May graduates walk in December. My niece is one of those kids. Perhaps you should begin planning for a December graduation or some sort of secondary ceremony to take place when most students will be home and widespread testing becomes available. We understand the need for a sanitized event at this time. Some of the graduates and their family members have personally suffered from the virus and continue to worry for their health. But without leaving the door open to future events, the class of 2020 will not be smiling for the cameras on June 7th. There needs to be another symbolic in-person ceremony and family members need not attend. This is about students having closure with each other as a class. And these are my daughter's thoughts at the end here. They're actually hard for me to read, so I'm listening to them. This is about them having something to replace the three months they've lost with each other this spring. To find some way to mentally move on from all they've been robbed of. The current tone of this committee is stubborn and uninspiring. It seems you have given up. To not attempt to serve proper closure to these students will leave them with a sour memory of high school for the rest of their lives, but it isn't your power to change that. And that last paragraph was Isabel. Thank you for considering these comments.
Thank you. One sec, hold on. Making sure. Lily. We did Lily, we did Rob.
Remind if I was chair comment while you're looking?
Just one, one sec, James. I'd rather just go through the formal citizen speak, I apologize, and then you can speak after. Anne Fox, are you still on the line from 67 Frothingham Street? Anne or Ryan Fox?
It's actually Ryan Fox, thank you.
Okay, good.
Thanks, everyone, for the amazing job that's, that's been done during this crisis to keep the education running. And also thank you for the, all the 12 years that we've been involved in the public schools. It's been a great experience. And I thank you, Mr. Jett, for addressing so many of the concerns that were raised, you know, around your presentation. I think there was definitely a thoughtful process to go through and come up with this plan. It's a difficult time and it requires difficult decisions. So there are a couple of points that I wanted to share or reiterate, which, you know, some of which have been said before. First, consulting the students. So I think we all understand that this has been a difficult season, but this is an opportunity. There's students' organization for reasons and students should have been consulted. This is a learning opportunity. As educators, we should be involving students in the process and considerations. Also keeping in mind that so many of these students are 18 and are adults or will be soon. Other towns have done surveys, looking at different options and assessing what the thoughts of students and parents were. These surveys obviously aren't binding and the decision needs to be made by responsible adults. However, the student's voice needs to be heard. Second point is that no matter when graduation takes place or what form it takes, the graduates will gather before, during, after, whenever the graduation takes place. So the question is, is June 17th the right time for that? Or for any celebration? Other people have said that the decision doesn't need to be made now. I think that's true. And I think June 7th is probably not the right time for, for any celebration.
Yes.
Post voting is an option. Plan is well thought out, but people will get out of cars and students will gather. We need to consider that and think about postponing. Thanks for all you do for schools and thanks for a great meeting.
Thank you. Michael Sullivan, are you still on the line and would like to speak? If so, can you just state your name and your street address for the record, please, for a minute?
Sheila?
Yeah?
I just also want to say that I've been in touch with a lot of, like, my friends who are senior parents. And if this is ever a financial issue, like, people will donate. I mean, I could single-handedly get people to donate to, like, for whatever, you know what I mean? Like, to rent out a place and, you know, we can make this happen if that has anything to do with this. And I, I know health is the utmost importance, but if we could get a large place, we could, I think we can make it happen, I don't know. Just my opinion.
Okay, I just, thanks, Carrie. I just need to move on to Michael Sullivan if he is on the line. If you're still on the line, Michael Sullivan, you said you'd like to speak on behalf of senior class. You can hit star six to have your volume come in.
I don't think he's there, Sheila.
Yeah, all right, I'm just kidding. I think that's everybody else that I, that had signed up on the chat. The hour is late. Mr. Jett, do you want to again speak tonight? Or do you want to still hold a, like a coffee or like a meeting? A Google, a Google meeting with senior parents again to answer all these questions? Or how would you like to handle it?
I would, I would like to end, but I, I just, and I really, I think Mr. Fallon's comment kind of resonated with me and I appreciate the respect and admiration that he has for the Milton Public Schools and I'm glad that he made that decision to come back. I want to make it very clear, it is not a financial situation whatsoever. It's not a large venue situation whatsoever, but because some venues are not allowing folks into their place right now. And so I would definitely speak to it next week a little bit, a touch of a bit, not much, in terms of the state of the state of Milton High School when I do that presentation. But again, I just, I want people to really to understand that this wasn't a decision. It was made, and I also need people to know, and I don't want to put this on the back of the senior government, I did have a conversation with him a couple of weeks ago and I had many conversations over the course of the last month with, as soon as the governor extend this to May 4th, many parents in many students, not only myself, but they also emailed the superintendent of Milton Public Schools, who phoned them to me to ask me to respond, and I did to each and every one of them. So I do want to believe it, now, I didn't respond to every single email that was sent to me yesterday, because that was a tough task to have with everything that's going on. But I just want to thank everybody and hopefully, hopefully in time, sooner rather than later, people will come together. And if everyone's really committed about celebrating, I was thinking is, let's make this celebration a positive one. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, can I just say one more thing before we close?
Technically, is this Natalia? Technically Natalia, like, you're only, you're legally only allowed to speak once at citizen speak?
All right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just a final closing?
I'm sorry to tell you, but you've given your time and you can, I'm sure Mr. Jett might have other meetings, you know, with the senior class, you know, and again, it's Mr. Jett's decision on the graduation, if it's about the graduation process. So we just.
I just want to let everyone know that we deserve better, that's it.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to close out the meeting. Can I have a second from a member of the committee, please?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Sheila, Sheila, can I just say something really quick?
Sheila, Sheila, can I say something really quick?
Sure.
I just want to thank you for running this meeting. It was, it was, it was, it was quite the experience in all our years together as parents in this town, and you were so gracious and kind, and did such a nice job running the meeting. And everyone did such a great job in the committee. And I just want to say, as someone who deals with, you know, schools every day, but on the other end of the spectrum, I just want to thank Mayor, Superintendent Gormly, and Dr. Pavlicek, and Dr. Spalding, and all the principals and administrators, because the loss echoes every single day in everything that we do, for all the lost opportunities this year, for all of our families and our children. And it's just so hard. And there's nothing we can say to make things better for these children, for these students and their families. There just isn't. We can only try to make a good situation, and try to celebrate, and wish them, and give them something. It's really hard, and I just want to thank the administration. I know, I know how hard it is every day to deal with all that isn't, and still with all that is.
Well said.
Yeah.
You're here.
I'm super impressed by all of you. I really am. So thank you for being a part of this.
Thank you.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, roll call vote, again, I think that I got, Member White said yes. Member Rosemarin?
Yes.
Member Everhard?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
And Dr. Krieger? I don't know if we lost her yet. Dr. Krieger is still there?
Let me see if she's there. I can't find her.
She's frozen. She has to stay here tonight.
I'm sorry, my screen keeps-
That's okay. You are, you are. Yeah.
Okay, you have been freezing, it's okay.
Okay.
I set up the windows, so.
And a member, a member Morella, myself, yes. Thank you to all the parents and everyone that came in tonight. Again, I know this process is foreign to many of you, so thank you for your patience. It's just legally, we have to abide by the Robert's Rules. And, you know, there's different circumstances, but I'm sure Mr. Jet will be, continue to be in conversation and in touch. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, everyone.